Hello, everyone. I'm Mike O'Reilly, Chairman of the Towne &amp; Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. And welcome to the November 18th, 2021. Reg. I would like the Commissioners and staff to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Dominic Smiglino.
Ryan Condon, Secretary.
Leanne Brosie, Commissioner.
Michael O'Reilly, Chairman.
Bruno Maia, Vice Chairman.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, Alternate.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Joe Chapman, Planning Administrator.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
We have Barbara Schellenberg, Attorney for the Town.
Here, thank you.
Just have a brief introduction to read. As you all know, this meeting will be conducted in court via electronic equipment pursuant to Connecticut Law, Public Act 21-02. Any member of the public who desires to submit information relative to business set forth on the agenda may do so by four p.m. on the day of the meeting by electronic mail to the address set forth on the agenda. Notice hereby given that this remote electronic hybrid public meeting shall, one, permit the public to view and listen anonymously, and when permitted, participate in real time, be recorded and posted on the town's website within seven days, and three be made available to the public within a reasonable amount of time in Town Hall on within request. In addition to the standard parliamentary procedures, the following special rules shall apply to all participants. Please mute your microphone so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking and on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record, and the use of the chat feature is prohibited. Thank you. First, we're going to have general public participation. Period of time is for the public to participate either virtually or in person in asking any questions or presenting any material to the commission that is not on the agenda or anticipated to be on a future agenda. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to participate? C1, yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Joel Willecker. I reside at 72, excuse me, 70 Huntingtown Road in the town of Monroe. I'm here tonight to ask the board to consider splitting your duties into two commissions, one being a planning commission and one being a zoning commission. The reason for my request is that over the past number of years of following many planning and zoning commissions' actions, I find that very little time gets spent on planning and most time gets spent on zoning regulations and enforcement. There's very little discussion about the integration of regional planning in regards to transportation, specials shared services, and land use, specifically diversification of housing and infill of housing. The benefit of two commissions could be partnering with your economic development commission. The planning commission can now work with them more closely than operating as two individual commissions, as it appears from the minutes that I've been dating. More people get involved in the community, more voices, more eyes on what the community's doing, and more opportunities to present new solutions. More time for continuing education opportunities for all commissioner members. State of Connecticut provides many, many educational opportunities for all of you. I doubt that many people have the opportunity between work and family to participate in those because you are sitting in very long meetings, many meetings, and splitting this up will give you an opportunity to maybe partake in ones. Planning requires your planning commission then would become more proactive than reactive. For years, we are a reactive board. We react to developers coming in with zoning changes, with bylaw changes, with statute changes, as opposed to coming forward and providing a good document at which developers could work from. Now, you may say we have a POCD, and we do. And the POCD really projects out 10 years. I'm talking about projecting out 20, 40 years. If we had put something like this in place 20 years ago, we would have had a vision for what we would like Monroe to be today and probably implemented those things. The solutions that you might come from a planning commission might provide better tax relief to taxpayers. We might have smarter ways to conduct business. An example, we spend $3 million a year on bus transportation for schoolchildren. If we were to be able, while those buses run half-empty and we have parents lined up at every school spilling out onto public streets, perhaps if we had a planning commission that could work with the Board of Ed, and I realize there is a state mandate that we must provide transportation for students to our schools, I get that, right? But perhaps if we had a planning commission, they could take up this issue and say, look, we could save money on our bus transportation if we change some regulations up at the state Capitol. We never get an opportunity as a board or as a community to even bring that forward. Little do we even have that input to our state representatives. So I think we could be much more effective to and serve the community much better if we split this mission into two different commissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Willecker. Are there any other members of the public here tonight or online that would like to address the commission? Any other members? If not, then we'll move on to public hearings. Tonight, we have one public hearing. EFP 2021-03, 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. This is an excavation and filling permit hearing. We notice is, in accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, November 18th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. or soon thereafter via hybrid meeting and by phone with limited in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall, Council Chambers, 7 Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut concerning the following. EFP 2021-03, 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. I2, excavation filling permit application for 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive, accessory map signed E4, lot 15500 and 15/28, Astro Land Holdings LLC and Spacely Land Holdings LLC, owners, Solly Engineering LLC representative. Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, November 3rd and Wednesday, November 10th. Thank you. And Rick, you have the exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Exhibit one, the EFP application, 2021-03. Notice of intervention, exhibit number two. Number three, intervenor exhibits. And number four, certified mailings. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And for the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solit. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solly Engineering. Office is located right here in Monroe, on Main Street. We're here to talk about an application at 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. It's an excavation and filling permit application. We're proposing to fill the site. This application should be very straightforward. However, we know there's a lot that's going to go into it, so we're going to try to do our best to give as thorough presentation as we can, and I'm looking forward to the discussion. First, I just want to introduce with me here a part of our project team. We have our attorney, Steve Finn, our environmental attorney, Jane Warren, and Arnold Karp from Ownership Group. And I wanted to first introduce Arnold to have him come up and just address the commission, and then I'll get into the detailed presentation.
Thank you. I'm Arnold Karp. I'm the managing member of Astro and Spacely Land Holdings. We're here to discuss 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence. I want to thank the commission for making us a single item this evening. Hopefully, we can get through this rapidly and concisely. We're here to talk about the facts, not theory. We have many millions of reasons to protect ourselves and the environment. As you know, we've invested a lot of money, time, and effort, and we think we have the site restoration, which needs to be done. We have the first step underway. We have an inland wetlands approval, and that's going to lead us to the restoration that we need. We're here to protect the town and our investment, and we have nothing hidden, so we're more than happy to discuss what we're doing and how we're planning to do it. Our goal is to do the right thing from the beginning. We're going to, again, listen to the facts and not the fiction. Kevin mentioned, we think we have a pretty, I hate to use the term simple, but a very program that should follow course very easily, which is we're going to de-water, we're going to fill, and then, of course, we're going to come back to you guys when we have the ability to build a building. But in the state that that property is currently in, it is very hard. One of the people who's sitting behind us is actually the broker, who would like to have this property put back into order so that he can bring potential tenants through. We're going to tell you about the protocols that we've developed. We think they're probably among the strongest in Connecticut in order to help our investment and the environment. And it largely comes down to what we're going to do and how we're going to fill it. You'll hear this several times, that any fill is looked at before it can be brought on the site. It is tested once it gets to the site. It gets tested even before it gets onto the site, and we're doing that to make sure we do everything properly. There'll be some discussion about the quality of fill and what is clean fill, and I think we'll make that very clear. And as you guys know, until last night, we've stayed away from the media and social media, even though that there's been quite a fair amount of false rumors and innuendo and allegations. We're going to try to clean that up so that there is on the record a document and a record of how we're planning to move this forward. So tonight, you're going to hear from our team of professionals how to make what is a difficult property into an asset for the town and my partners. So I'm going to let Kevin start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Arnold. So, as I said, I'm going to try to be as free as I can, but there's certainly a lot that's going to go into this application because it is a big proposal. So just first to start out, can we share the screen, Rick? Can I plug this into the?
Yes.
How do I do that? Do you have to do something there? Because I'm not sure this is being presented to the people.
I have share screen on.
I'm not sure if this is. Do I have to log on to the GoToMeeting?
No.
I thought it was all set for you to go.
Do you have your real stick in there?
I do. No, the presentation's up. I'm just not sure it's being projected to everyone at all. I want to make sure everyone gets the full experience.
This is the first time being the facilitator, so.
Yeah.
There you go.
Sorry.
A little teaser.
It's just.
Thank you. So just to orient everyone, the site is, the project site is located off the north end of Pepper Street. So this is just an area of the town of Monroe. There's two properties, 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. These were developed as part of the Pepper Street business, started back in 2003, I believe, with 25 runs north-south along the western side of Tavern, and this is accessed off of the northern side of Pepper Street. With a little bit of a closer aerial here, you can see Route 25 is here, the northern end of Pepper, and you access these properties off of Cambridge Drive, this location here, which is, again, the part of Pepper Street Business Park. So the site itself, a little bit of the history, so it's two properties, as I said, 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence Drive. One item that I want to point out first is that this project did recently receive approvals from the Wetlands Commission as part of that. There was a request to reconfigure these lot lines to better align where some of the wetland remediation area was done. So we have filed a lot line revision with the Town and Perp's office, and this aerial now represents what the property line configuration is, which is reflected in the application materials. So you can see 4 Independence Drive is to the northern side of the site, and 64 Cambridge is a larger parcel to the south. So first, just to start with some history, so the site was originally approved back in 2006 for two industrial buildings. The previous owner and previous developer operated on the site for over 13 years, and he dug a very big hole. He excavated beyond the limits, both horizontally and vertically, than what was previously approved, and he ceased operations in the spring of 2019. In July of 2019, the property changed hands, to which the current applicant and owner, Mr. Karp, acquired the properties. And he did a number of things prior to that acquisition and then as soon as he did acquire the property. The first thing he did is make sure that he went through his own due diligence to ensure that the property that he did acquire did not have any environmental impacts or environmental issues. He went through his due diligence, he bought the property, and then he immediately called us to engage us for our services and also to engage the town and talk about how to take a piece of property that's really underutilized from an industrial standpoint, given its location and the prominence from the industrial park, and tried to create a path forward on how this property could be improved and become a much more fruitful contributing property to the town of Monroe. So we started to engage, I think we engaged the town staff, I think we even came to this commission, our Regulation Subcommittee, several times. And during this time, a concerned neighbor started to raise a number of concerns about the environmental integrity of the property. This neighbor had attempted to fire the property. He did not have a chance to buy the property. It was purchased by the current property owner and applicant. However, he did raise a number of concerns about the condition of the property. He called everyone that he could. He called the town. He called the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. He called the Aquarium and Water Company, who owned a budding piece of property. And he raised a number of concerns about the prior activity on the site and the current condition of the site. And that prompted a number of things to happen. It prompted us to change our course a little bit with the Towne &amp; Monroe. We received, we went through a process with both the Monroe and the Wetlands Commission, started a process with this commission where we wanted to really understand the prior activities, what took place, and how it impacted the surrounding natural resources and things like that. So we filed an application to essentially restore, we did a deep exhaustive study. We determined that the previous activities reduced the watershed to the surrounding natural resource and the wetlands on the property, and our application was prepared and submitted to basically restore those watersheds. And what that means is we had to fill the hole that was dug and then bring in additional materials so that we could restore some former drainage patterns to some of these natural resources, primarily on the eastern side of the property, to bring them, to create them to be more of a vibrant wetland and resource. I'm sorry. I know, continue. Oh, okay. So we, our initial application, it was, the Wetlands Commission determined that what we had proposed to restore the entirety of the watershed was going to require too much material to be imported to the property. So we then went through a revised process. We met with them again, and we filed a new application, which essentially reduced the amount of fill we were proposing to bring on the property. And that application was approved. So now we're here in front of this commission to essentially secure the necessary permits from you to close out and to finish the wetland remediation and restoration application, which was previously approved by Wetlands. So that will entail and require the import of approximately 493,000 cubic yards of material on the property to restore some grades. Now, while we were going through those, the previous permitting efforts, and there was a lot of concerns raised about the condition of the property, as I mentioned, it prompted a number of investigations and things like that. The Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, both water, air, and remediation came out to the site, they did inspections, and they actually determined that there were no violations issued. I have an inspection report from the Water Resources Department, and I've highlighted that there was no violations noted. And I'll say that the applicant's team has been continuously working with the EP, and our attorney, environmental attorney, Ms. Jane Warren, can also speak about that in more detail. I'm going to answer any questions the commission may have regarding, to that regard. So as I stated, we went through wetland applications, planning and zoning applications, we did extensive investigations, and our determination was to fill the site. Now, as part of a lot of those previously, those allegations and raised concerns about the integrity of the property, there were a number of comments raised about what's on the property. And I think you'll hear tonight, we know that we have a concerned citizen who's filed an intervention petition, and I know there will be a presentation after our presentation regarding that. And I think a lot of what you'll hear is a discussion about demolition debris and if that's been brought on the property and what that looks like. So what I wanted to do is just to kind of provide some clarification, because what I'm going to talk a lot about is clean fill. And the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has a definition of clean fill. We're going to go through that in a little bit of detail later on. But construction and demolition debris is not clean fill. And when anybody demolishes a building, they have to go through a process and secure a demolition permit, and they identify where that C and D debris, demolition debris, is going to be deposited. And they usually go to transfer stations and things like that. So C and D debris is registered, and it says where it's going to go. Clean fill is not C and D debris. And I just want to show you, these are actually some pictures of the former Boucher Victormont facility at 10 Main Street, which I don't know the commission's very familiar with. And this is when this building was demolished. And you'll notice in this picture that there are carts or trailers here, which is where, as the building is being demolished, they essentially take it apart with an excavator, and they carefully sort out, and they put all that C and D debris into those trailers. Here's a picture of a pile of that material, and they put it into those cans, and those cans go to those carting companies because that C and D debris needs to be disposed of in the appropriate manner. Here's another picture. You can see this is the back of the building, and you can see those containers, those dumpsters here, where they're carefully being sorted, and that C and D debris is being picked out and put in those right locations. Now, fill is not C and D debris. So I think there's going to be some statements you'll likely hear about, you know, demolition jobs, where the C and D debris is supposed to go to a specific location, and that C and D debris likely went to that location. Any material that was brought on this property was clean fill, and that clean fill complies with the definitions of the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. These are just some pictures of some clean fill, which exists on the property. And while this fill came from a number of different places, as part of our previous applications, we provided this commission ample records from the prior owner's activities and what material was brought on the property, where it was, and that all that material didn't meet the definition of clean fill. Now, as part of the previous applications included in your submission materials, we did extensive testing on the property, and the owner did, to ensure that the material that was imported to the property did not have any environmental contamination. So WSP and Derek Jones, our licensed environmental professional, is essentially deputized by the DEEP, as all LEPs are, to analyze properties, to understand if there's any environmental impact on that property, and to do sufficient testing to determine whether or not anything requires remediation. So our LEP did an exhaustive test. You can see on here, each one of these dots is a boring that was conducted or a test that was conducted, so that there was adequate sampling of all material that was on the property. In addition to analytical chemical analysis that was conducted on both materials, soil materials, things like that on the property, and also the water on the property. So there was, to the north of the site, as I stated, the previous applicant dug a big hole, and that hole filled up with groundwater. And that water was tested. The water downstream of all the imported material was tested, and all those materials and all those tests came out that those, that all that material is, does not have any environmental impact, and it's actually, essentially clean to the residential standard. And I'll notice that the surface water in our local data is actually much cleaner than a lot of other bodies of water in Towne &amp; Monroe that are at parks and things like that. So from a summary and a conclusion from that environmental report, I just want to read it for the record. WSP, the LEP, did not identify conditions at the site that are indicative of the presence of a source of contamination to groundwater or thereby the onsite wetlands. Evidence of the presence of contaminated materials was not identified within discrete stockpiles. In addition, the stormwater and groundwater-fed surface border body at the site did not exhibit any evidence of impacts. So I just kind of wanted to run through that from a summation that this site has been exhaustively tested, exhaustively analyzed by an LEP. And because of all the concerns raised, the DEP is actively engaged in working with the property owner and our environmental attorney and our environmental professional to ensure that the site is clean. So I just wanted to bring that to the forefront from a discussion standpoint, because the DEP is the enforcement arm for environmental concerns in the state of Connecticut. And I want to make sure that this commission has comfort, that they are going to be, they are doing their job, they are well-engaged, they've been to the site several times, and they are actively working on this product, on this property. So I just want the commission to take comfort with that, and then if there's any additional questions, comments, as I mentioned, our environmental attorney is here, we can talk in more detail about the recent discussions and things like that. But we've provided information that they've requested, and we believe that, you know, as Mr. Karp mentioned, he has millions of reasons to ensure that this property is not going to, would not create any environmental concern or anything like that, and it's been exhaustively tested, so the site currently does not have any environmental concerns. So, and that brings us to our application. So we're proposing to, again, as I stated, simply put, previous owner dug a big hole. We want to fill that. We want to fill that hole to do two things. We want to be able to restore the watershed to the surrounding natural resources, and we want to create this property to be something that can be developed in the future to accommodate industrial operations and industrial activities or any of the other permitted uses within the zone, within the Pepper Street Business Park. So included in your packet is a comprehensive set of engineering drawings, engineering report, and I'm going to kind of run through what we're proposing and a lot of the other things that we built into our application to ensure that the process to be followed as part of this activity can be done so in a way that will not create any adverse impacts or result in any environmental harm to the property or any of the surrounding resources. So up on the screen here, this is our overall proposed grading plan, which essentially shows our proposed contours and where we're going to be established for different elevations throughout the property. We are essentially proposing to fill the large portion of the site, 64 Cambridge Drive, to an elevation that's roughly consistent with the grades when you first come to the property. So this creates an elevation and developable building pad, which can accommodate an industrial user of up to probably 350,000 square feet, which would simply be a great addition to the community. And then the property to the north, 4 Independence Drive, this property is being proposed to be filled to a higher elevation, more consistent with Independence Drive. This area through here is going to be filled to an elevation to ensure that we can provide natural watershed from rainwater, from rain events, to drain to the east, from west to east in this location here, to rehydrate and to restore some of the watershed for the easterly wetland system located on the easterly property line. As part of this, we designed and we've provided a number of specifications for how this could be done. We have proposed that the, as I mentioned, the previous hole that was dug was deep, and that was dug below the elevation of groundwater. So we are proposing to fill that deepest part of the site to an elevation of 411, only using native materials, which were native to the site and currently stockpiled at the site. So that material would be placed up to elevation 411 to bring that grade up and out of the natural groundwater. natural groundwater. And then from there, we would only import and provide clean fill to be filled to the balance of the grade. And then we're even proposing an impervious liner to be placed roughly six feet down from our proposed finished grade, to ensure that any and all of that rainwater that falls will be able to fall on that area and drain to the east to get to those wetland systems, as I mentioned before. So in order for us to place this fill, the first thing we have to do is we have to de-water. Actually, let me go back to that. So as I said, we're importing clean fill. And clean fill is a term that's defined by the Department of Energy Environmental Protection. Now, when you look at what the clean fill definition is, there's three main components. Natural soil is clean fill. Second component is rock, brick, ceramics, concrete, and asphalt paving fragments, which are virtually inert, and pose neither a pollution threat to ground or surface waters, nor a fire hazard. And then three is polluted soils. Now, we are not proposing to bring polluted soils onto our property, we're also not proposing to bring asphalt or paving fragments onto our property. And that's better characterized and identified in our material intake protocol, which we've submitted as part of our application, which essentially outlines how material, how the management of material would be managed as part of this import process. So what that means is, this has been something that's been taken from excerpts from the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protections Regulations for Solid Waste Management. And what it does is it does a number of things. It requires that any and all material to be imported to the property has to come with a manifest and a certificate of conformity to show that that material has been tested and has no environmental impacts. To ensure that no material deposited on the property has any potential issues from an environmental sample. So the material is, before it can even be brought to the property, it has to be tested, it's then brought to the property, it's then visually inspected by operators of the facility. The material is then screened using a PID meter, which looks for volatile organics and things like that. The material would then be, if provided that it's inspected and it matches what's shown on the certificate of conformity, and that material's been tested, it would then be stockpiled to be, to provide for a couple of things. The material has to be inspected again, and we're also providing and creating a quality assurance, quality control procedures to allow for additional testing by rockhead personnel to verify that that material, you know, from a sampling standpoint, poses no environmental risk or any impact to the environment. Included in our protocol has a very in-depth screening procedures, and it has specific constituents that have to be, substances that have to be tested. And those are established in accordance with regulations from the administrators of DEEP. In addition to the protocol, which outlines all of this in great detail, it also has our list of accepted materials. I just kind of wanted to show this as a comparison, because while the DEP clean fill includes a number of components that could be viewed as potentially harmful, our intake protocol clearly defines what is acceptable to come on the property, and any of those potential concerns from the definition of clean fill are not permitted. So it's clear that there's accepted materials would be natural soil, rock, stone, sand, gravel, clean concrete, ceramics, and bricks. And I had asphalt paving fragments on here, because I realized that as part of our initial application, that was still included in that accepted materials list. But through our discussions with the Wetlands Commission, and verbal statements that we've made, the owner's actually committed to not even import any asphalt fragments on the property. We don't want to use any asphalt property, or asphalt is filled on the property. So we're actually striking that from our accepted materials list, and we'll provide the commission with an updated material intake protocol which reflects that. Now, as part of the previous ownership, there was some asphalt stockpile on the property, that material would be processed and used as subbase material for future building areas and future pavement areas, but it would not be used as any fill to bring that elevation of those grades back up to the proposed grades as shown on our grading and drainage plan. So in addition to our grading plan, we also have a very robust soil erosion sediment control plan. Now, one of the first things that the new owner did when he acquired the property was engage us, and then also update and refresh two permits that we have with the DEP. We have two general permits. One for stormwater discharge during construction for commercial activities, and there's also an active permit for stormwater discharge for industrial activities. So these are permits that are on the property, that are current, and they are active. And they allow us to manage how the site is protected from a soil erosion sediment control standpoint, and it provides parameters and requirements that the owner has to follow to ensure that there isn't any sediment-lin water leaving the property, or there isn't any environmental concern. So that includes periodic inspections by engineers from my office, who conduct inspections after every rain event that generates more than a tenth of an inch of water, and also weekly. We also have to provide quarterly testing from an industrial stormwater standpoint, to ensure that there's no contaminants or anything else going on in any of the stormwater that leaves the property. So as I mentioned before, we are trying to fill a deep hole. And the first step of that is to de-water that groundwater, which is in the deepest parts of the site. So our soil erosion sediment control plan includes parameters on how we would do that. We would establish essentially a floating pump in the area of that water to the north, and then provide a series of hoses and pipes to discharge that water to a sedimentation and erosion control basin located in the southeast corner of the site. That water would be discharged into that basin, but it would be discharged into a sediment bag, which is essentially a big woven fabric bag, so that water is discharged into that. Any sediment or anything that would be within that water would be captured in that bag, and then only clean water would come out of that bag, and then that would ultimately discharge over the level spreader and emergency spillway for that sedimentation basin. So that has been prepared in accordance with the 2002 Soil Erosion Sediment Control Manual as provided by DEEP, and also in accordance with the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual as provided by the DEEP and the Stormwater Enhancement Regulations on the DOT. So from a de-watering standpoint, the existing general permit that we have with the DEP, which is to show that that is an active permit, that allows us to de-water and discharge stormwater during construction. Now, we know that there were concerns raised about how that water's going to be de-watered, and we actually re-verified that with the DEP. Here's an email from October of this year, from Doug Haskins, from Environmental Analyst, from Water Planning and Management Division, which essentially reaffirms that we have the appropriate permits in place, and we are allowed to de-water that in accordance with our permits issued by the Monroe Wetlands Commission, as part of our, that was recently approved from a remediation and restoration standpoint, which essentially captures and allows for us to do exactly what we need to do. So from a soil erosion patrol standpoint, we designed the site with a number of sedimentation basins, sedimentation traps, and we've established, clearly defined the area on how materials would come into the property, where those materials would be inspected, and then stocked piles for further testing and inspections, and then essentially sorted as needed prior to placement in the deeper parts of the site to complete that fill operation. As I stated, the ultimate goal here is to develop these properties with commercial and industrial buildings. In order to do that, this material has to be placed in 12-inch lifts, compacted with a roller, and tested to ensure that we're providing appropriate compaction so it can support a future building. So this is a very expensive and would be a light the operation to bring in this much material, to place this material structurally, and to allow for the project to be completed in accordance with what was approved by the Wetlands Commission. So we have, as I mentioned, we have a very detailed and robust set of drawings. I'll run through it somewhat briefly, because I think we've talked quite a bit about the overall tentative proposing, and I think we'd like to really allow for the invoker to give their presentation and then answer questions with the commission. So as I stated before, material will be imported to the property, the lower elevation to the north on 64 Cambridge will be brought to an elevated pad, and then the northern portion of the property, 4 Independence, will be raised to a higher elevation consistent with Independence Drive, to allow for that surface water to flow from west to east to rehydrate that wetland system here. We have a swell design at the top of the existing rock slope, which runs from north to south, to ensure that that wetland, or that surface water can essentially be collected and directed from north to south to feed that easterly wetland system as far south as possible, to create or mimic and match what the former hydrology was on the site prior to any activity. When you come into the site, we have a large stormwater quality basin to the right side of the access road. We have another stormwater quality basin to the west side of the access road, and then that essentially comes into a large portion of the site. We also have a sedimentation stormwater basin in the southeast corner of the site, as I mentioned previously, de-watering, de-watering to. And again, the grading plan is to show how we're proposing for our proposed potential elevations. And then you can see here, there would be a graded, grade change between the lower elevation on 64 Cambridge, and then the upper elevation pad on 4 Independence Drive. So as part of our, as part of our application, we did request a number of waivers from the commission for them to consider from the excavation permit fill regulations. Just want to run through those quickly. So per section 6.4.9C, no change in contour shall be made within 25 feet of any property line. As this, as this project is essentially proposed to take place over two properties, we would need to propose grading within 25 feet of that property line, so we are requesting a waiver from this commission for that component, which I think is consistent with how the commission has viewed previous applications for fill permits, which would be consistent. Per section 6.4.9D, no artificial slope greater than 14 degrees to the horizontal, or maximum four feet horizontal to one foot vertical shall be created within 50 feet of any property line. We do have some three-to-one slopes proposed as part of our activity within those, within 50 feet of any property lines. We request a waiver for that provision as well.
Those just between your two properties?
Yes.
Not, and then on the perimeter?
There are some, there are some areas of the site to the south. There are some grades that exceed three-to-one, just basically because the existing grades are such, where we don't want to perform more wholesale grading around the perimeter than we need to. So I think that this three-to-one slope may be closer than 50 feet from the property line, as is the grading to accommodate this retention basin. But I don't believe that's inconsistent with many other properties that are, that proposed grading is part of just a normal site plan application. It's just a waiver provision for the excavation. Per section 6.4.9E, no artificial slope greater than 14 degrees to the horizontal should be created within 50 feet of any street line. We are requesting a waiver for this, simply because we do have some burns along the northern part of the site with Independence Drive. And those are kind of, those are existing, and then we're also proposing to fill this area, as I mentioned before. We would have some damage there, but this has been designed to allow for a driveway connection from the cul-de-sac of Independence Drive to access this future building pad. And then lastly, per section 6.4.9P, all permitted such activities, per location, shall not include permit or involved materials from off-site locations. We're requesting the commission grant a waiver for us to process, you know, sort grading crushed materials from off-site locations in order to place those materials onsite, simply because, as I mentioned before, this project requires the import of 493,000 cubic yards of material, which is a lot of material to fill a very deep hole that was dug by a previous owner. In order for us to source and find that material, we're going to have to be able to bring in some material that likely may need to be crushed, so we can have it prepared to the proper gradation, so it can be placed in structural lifts, to ensure that we have the proper compaction to support future development. So I'll just run through the rest of our design, try to be somewhat brief. As I mentioned, we have our soil erosion control plan, which is in accordance with the Soil Erosion Sediment Control Manual. We have various sedimentation basins and traps and swales throughout the property to ensure that stormwater is collected and directed in the right locations without any adverse impact to the surrounding resources. We have our extensive notes and details for that. We have a overall landscaping plan, which was approved as part of our Wetlands Commission. We've identified how the site will be restored and left in its future condition, with details for some upland enhancement areas for wetlands, in addition to some wetland restoration remediation approved as part of that previous application. We're trying to create a much more robust vegetated buffer for these wetlands and resources that currently exist on the property. As part of this, we have various inset maps which show where those plantings are, what those plantings will be, and how we'll be able to create a much improved situation from what's out there today, based on the previous owner's actions. We also included, in accordance with the requirements, extensive sections which show the existing grade and our proposed grades. No need to really bore you with these, but obviously the information is included in your packet to demonstrate that we do comply with the proposed excavation filling regulations as part of this activity. So, you know, with that, I know that there is a, as I mentioned before, we know there's an intervenor.
Before you go to the intervenor, can you just? Show us a little more detail into how you're going to fill the northern portion of the property and the impervious cap, and how that's going to?
Direct the flow of water. Yes. So, let me bring it back. Yeah, that might actually be the best way to do it.
Arnold Carr just kept on saying for that, just a few things. Understanding that where we're filling, where the water is, of course, first that would be pumped out through the system that Kevin has explained. We're going to take what is currently on the site, the material that came from the site, and that's what we're filling in the water table to elevation 411, which gets us out of the water table. All the material that was left on site, so that's nothing that's going to be brought in, it's basically what's there and going to be pushed into the hole. The other thing that Kevin didn't highlight is all of our testing on any of the material that comes in, is not only tested to what I will say is industrial standards, but to residential standards. So that is as high a bar as you can get in the state of Connecticut. We've had Kevin and solely engineering testing the properties since we purchased it. So we have a long list of, you know, what the water is like, what's, you know, falling on the property, and what's leaving the property. And great care has to be taken, not dissimilar to 10 and 36 where we want to build, but also here, when the material is placed, it all has to be compacted, not to our standards, but to an independent third party who will come and make sure that it's suitable for building. So, has Kevin just looked at that?
Okay, so this is, this is a section through that deepest part of the site, here. Let me see if I can zoom in even more. So what this shows is the existing grade. To the east is the wetland system along the eastern side of the property. And this line here, which I'm following in my cursor, represents the existing contours in that area. Prior to any site disturbance, this grade actually continued up to a peak, probably around 490 or so, and all that water that would land in this area would just drain, you know, sufficiently over to those wetland systems. This area was overexcavated, and what this section shows is where that existing grade is today. It shows the elevation of 411, to which we will be placing native material that's native to the site, that has been tested and is clean. So that would go up to elevation 411, which is consistent with actually how groundwater is naturally attenuating on the property, as we had previously determined this elevation through a hydrogeologic step. through a hydrogeologic study, actually over the several months that's actually reached natural fruition and our previous analysis has been verified. So we're proposing to place material up to that elevation with just native material. We would then be filling the balance of that area with clean fill in accordance with the material intake protocol up to an elevation of approximately 464. And as I mentioned before, we are proposing an impervious liner to be located three to six feet below finished grade so that any water that doesn't just essentially run along the surface of our proposed grading will actually be able to infiltrate into the ground and then run along that impervious liner to ensure that will still reach that easterly wetland system. And that was the biggest thing that we went through with the wetlands commission was that the greatest harm that was caused by the activity had to do with essentially depleting those wetlands, those resources with that natural hydrology from stormwater. So while the wetlands approval doesn't restore the entirety of the watershed, it does restore enough where that wetland system will be able to become, will be able to come back and be much more vibrant than it is today as it has been essentially starved of a lot of that hydration over the past several years. So as I mentioned, it would be native material up to this elevation. It would be clean fill from there up to that liner. And actually, as I recall, an additional condition of the wetlands approval was to also preserve and put only dated material above that liner as well. So that was another provision that we agreed to as part of our wetlands. So we're essentially going to be able to take all the native material that's there, the quarry screenings from the previous operation, place those within the deepest part of the fill and then place those above that and at that impervious line.
It's going to drain off to the right into the wetlands.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, why don't you go to the intervenor's presentation?
Is there more? Yeah, sure. We have a couple other team members. We're going to add some stuff that I may gloss over.
I'm going to be brief, Mr. Jim. Good evening. For the record, my name is Steve and I'm the attorney representing the applicant. I just want to emphasize the context in which this application comes before you. So typically, when there is a site development plan, application for site plan or special permit, where the property has wetlands on it, the application is basically to you, to this commission, for approval, but because there are inland wetlands on it, you have to get an inland wetlands report in order for you to act on that application. This is a unique situation because this situation is not prompted by a development project, right? It's not prompted by a site plan application or a special permit application. It's driven, and the reason why we're here is because it was motivated by the issuance of a notice of violation by the inland wetlands commission for this property. Now, you've heard this before and I'm going to stay up to the record, those inland wetland violations were not caused by the present owner. In fact, he bought the property in approximately July of 2019 and the notice of violation was issued within months after that. It's like someone was waiting. So, but since that time, sometime in 2019, we've been appearing before the inland wetlands commission to respond to their notice of violation with regard to the damage to wetlands caused by the prior owner. And finally, after lengthy hearings, we got an approval of a restoration plan. Now, that's the plan that you have before you tonight is virtually that plan that has been approved by the inland wetlands commission to remediate the wetlands and to remediate the notice of violation issued by that buyer. And so in connection with that remediation plan to address the notice of violation, the inland wetlands commission thoroughly vetted this plan. In fact, they came in and said originally that your plan to use 900,000 cubic yards of fill is too aggressive. You need to cut it back. So we cut it back to approximately 453,000 cubic yards, which is the amount of fill that they, the inland wetlands commission, determined is necessary to restore the watershed to rehydrate the wetlands. So in a way, our hands are tied. Our hands are tied by the approval of the inland wetlands commission with regard to the amount of fill, the placement of the fill, and how the project is going to be done. Now, they had five hearings on this application. And the reason why they had five hearings on that inland wetlands application primarily is because the same intervenor who's appeared to intervene in this proceeding intervened there and made many, many arguments. And you'll see in the decision on the inland wetlands commission granting the restoration plan that they specifically mentioned the intervenor in the decision. And the hearing went on for months. And finally, they rejected the intervenor's complaints and claims and approved our project. So I just want to give you the context that what's really driving this is remediation of this property. And we need your approval. We need your approval of that plan in order to comply with the inland wetlands commission or application, granting of our application to remediate the notice of violation. So I just thought that was important context for you all to have. I have a feeling that their approval, the inland wetlands approval, which goes on for many pages and has a lot of conditions, is already part of the record, but I would appreciate it if we could make sure that's part of the record and I have copies. And I would ask you to please read how thorough they are, what kind of conditions they placed on this proof. For example, they're requiring the applicant to hire a third-party person to review the project and report and set parameters. And there are other numerous safeguards. For example, there's a $740,000 bond that is part of their conditions. You will see, again, the inland wetlands commission was very thorough with regard to this. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew, again, the context of why we're here before you. Your attention.
One other item I want to point out regarding that bond and that bond amount, that's something that we've worked closely with Scott Schoss line on, and that bond actually covers, generally the wetlands commission will require a bond for only the work within the designated area. The bond imposed by wetlands actually covers the entirety of the site to make sure that there's sufficient bonding to cover the entirety of the site, not just the regulated area. So I think that this commission should, you know, hopefully consider that establishing their own bonding on this project.
Are there any other speakers on the applicant's spot? Mike?
Not the current time.
Intervener has requested time to make comments. This will be the time we can let the intervenor make comments. I just asked that they hold any questions till the end of their comment period. Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Good evening. For the record, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Rose. It's my pleasure to appear before this commission this evening on behalf of Peter Metropolis, trustee who has filed a petition to intervene. I guess I have a presentation this evening that I'd like to make. I will unfortunately ask the commission to hold the matter open to complete our presentation because one of our consultants said a death in the family, specifically Evan Glass's father passed recently and was unavailable this evening. Our thoughts are certainly with him, but so I'll ask for that. But I'm happy to, I have a, I still have a presentation to make and I really would want to forge ahead on this, if I may. So we are, for a variety of reasons, I am going to urge this commission to deny this application. And I will get into greater detail on that. I can't help but address a few of the comments that were made this evening. And I'm not going to go down the rabbit hole because I don't think it's that important, but there are a couple of items that I think should be clarified. The length of the inland wetlands proceeding was, I think the applicant was suggesting that it was all the intervenor that delayed that. And I think, I'm not sure that's fair. It doesn't really matter, but I will simply comment that many of the comments and many of the conditions were as a result of suggestions that the intervenor had made. Having said that, the inland wetlands permit or restoration plan is presently on appeal. And just for the edification of the commission, just so that you know, the basis of our appeal is that the proposed activities go beyond a remediation plan and in our view, by exceeding the violation that the applicant has been cited with, we are of the position that the applicant needs a wetland permit in order to proceed with the proposed work. That appeal is presently pending and obviously you don't have to trouble yourself with that and the applicant proceeds at their peril on this. I'd like to, let me just get a little bit of low-hanging fruit here right out of the way. This application arises pursuant to section 6.4.19 of your regulations, which addresses the fill and conditions of fill operations. And I note that that section and other sections pertaining to filling in the sections before it, which also apply, and fill application procedures specifically invoke section 6.4.8 of your regulations, which deal with excavation. And 6.4.8 invokes 6.4.9, which speaks about conditions. And I'm sorry to throw all these regulations at you, but basically it's interesting that the applicant is asking for waivers of certain provisions of 6.4.9. And as the applicant had indicated, they are asking for waivers of the 25-foot setback. They're asking for certain slope waivers and they are asking for a waiver to process materials on site, grading and crushing and the like. And one of your regulations, 6.4.23, suggests that this commission may waive certain provisions of zoning regulations, quote, "on a case-by-case basis." And I, as an initial point, want to caution the commission and I urge you to consult the town attorney. And specifically, I will cite the McKenzie case, which was an appellate court decision where you may recall that I, it was a development on Route 25 and you had a provision in your regulations that allowed waiver of certain landscaping requirements. And the appellate court found quite clearly that those sorts of waiver provisions violate the uniformity requirements of the Connecticut general statutes for zoning regulations, meaning that waivers are to be granted by law by your zoning board of appeals and not by planning and zoning commissions, which must follow a letter of their zoning regulations. And I'm sure Attorney Schellenberg can advise you on that. And I urge you as an initial matter to get a legal opinion on that, but I am very skeptical that that can be done. In my position, it cannot be done, but again, I urge you to get an opinion on that. The next point that I want to get into is I note that in their application, the applicant goes to great lengths to distance themselves, distance the applicant from the prior owner. And I think there were comments made about the conduct of the prior owner and overexcavating of the site and certain activities and, but I would suggest to you that there is just tremendous overlap in terms of the activities that have continued under the present owners of these properties. There is tremendous overlap in terms of the, in terms of the personnel. And as you know, Mr. Kimball was involved with the property and was the principal of the property prior to its acquisition by the present owner. And there is ample documentation out there that suggests that Mr. Kimball acted and worked with the, very closely on behalf of the consultant and in fact, has been involved in dealing with, I'm in possession of emails that I can provide to the commission as recently as July of this year, where Mr. Kimball was providing information too deep on behalf of the present owners and is apparently acting as a representative of the present owners. So not so fast on separating this applicant from the prior owner. To further compound things, the, the present owner is represented, and I apparently Attorney Jane Kimball Warren is present and is, as I understand it, the sister of John Kimball and seems to be involved in dealing with environmental issues. And so as far as my client and I are concerned, there is a tremendous relationship between the prior owner and the current owner. And if I may have screen sharing, I'd like to begin my next portion of my presentation and you'll just bear with me for one moment. It's that kind of party. So when I put on screen sharing, I'm not seeing Ms. Foley's.
Can I also share your screen? You just got to make him a presenter.
Yeah. Oh, I thought that was, he was using one of yours. Okay. This is the, would it be wireless or?
No, I'm not sure it'd be there. Actually, who's running the go-to meeting? Sarah?
No, right, right here.
Oh, now I think you just have to click on his name.
Good reading.
13 people, yeah, that's what, that's the part, yeah, okay.
Nicole Lupo. Need to be like.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we can.
So it has come to the attention of my client and I know that officials of this town are aware that the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection is presently conducting an investigation of this site. This and the department made available to my client and to access to documents that it has received from the applicant as part of this investigation. I'm sure that the applicant can provide you with some more information on this investigation and I will tie this in to the present investigation in a moment. But as you can see, this is a letter from Attorney Warren to Mark Jepson of the, of DEEP, in which she says, "Thank you for allowing us extra time to submit all of the attached documentation. We have provided all available Rockhead LLC customer lists, customer usage reports, certificates of conformity, and analytical data." The first thing that comes to mind when I first saw this document, which was this week, was I note that in appearing before this commission countless times, members of this commission have repeatedly, repeatedly asked for this very information. And repeatedly, the applicant has assured this commission and assured members of this commission that this information would be made available. So this certainly confirms that there is a huge volume of information. So this certainly confirms that there is a huge volume of information that is readily available, that the applicant has made available to others. And it is beyond me how this information has not been provided directly to the town of Monroe and specifically as part of this application. And as the applicant has referenced, but spent very little time discussing, in fact, just touched on briefly, there's presently a cease and desist involved, involving this property and the conduct that has been engaged in by this app, this applicant on this property. I've had the opportunity and I have documents that I can and will share with the town and hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents that reflect that during this owner's ownership of this property, there have been hundreds, if not thousands, of truckloads of material brought into this site, including hundreds and hundreds of truckloads of concrete, of reinforced concrete with rebar and steel reinforcement in it. There have been dozens and dozens of truckloads of material brought to this site with metals in them. And this is in the actual documents that have been provided. I saw the documents, the applicant's own documents confirm what I am stating to this commission. Now, your regulations specifically prohibit the processing of off-site materials onsite or the processing onsite of materials that come from off-site. And certainly, the, certainly, the, this application involves the filling of areas of this site upon which this applicant has received these materials and use these materials apparently as fill because we know that the contours of this property have changed. I note that Mr. Chapman and Mr. Schultz have been to the site. I note that this very conduct that I'm discussing is what gave rise to this violation. So it seems to me that before we simply glide by this violation, as the applicant would blithely like you to do and spent so little time talking about the violation, it seems to me that you have to get to the bottom of the violation and find out exactly what has come into this site, what the basis of this violation is, what the true implications of this conduct are before you can begin to consider this application, which certainly is, is part of the standards of granting this application, you must address sort of the existing conditions on the site under your own regulations. And so I don't know, I would suggest and the intervenor would suggest that this commission hire a consultant, an independent consultant to, well, first and foremost, this commission should not go one step, not one inch further with this application until this applicant provides this documentation, the same documentation that it has provided to Deep. That's item one. Once this commission is in receipt of that information, this information should be reviewed by a consultant, a competent consultant retained to guide this commission in assessing what has occurred on this site during the ownership of this applicant to understand the nature and extent of what is going on here and, and really what is confronted and what this commission must do in the fair exercise of its jurisdiction. Just bear with me. I provided the commission with documents and the next, to make matters, just to, to put even a finer point on this, I provided the commission with documents, including demolition permits. And as this commission is aware, there are sites that are designated by Deep pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes and the applicable regulations as brownfield sites. As part of my commissions to the commission, reviewing the documents that the applicant had provided, I was able to locate several brownfield sites where materials were imported by, under the, under the supervision of this applicant. By looking at the applicant's own documents, I was able to identify sites that are brownfield sites under the deep classification, where materials were brought into this site for processing and as fill. And I, I'm happy to go through those. I don't know the degree to which the commission has had an opportunity to look at that.
Those documents you're talking about is from a year ago?
I'll show you an example. This is part of the list maintained by Deep of contaminated or potentially contaminated sites. I would point to the first property is 333 Main Street in Danbury. As you can see, the property is listed in three instances at the top and it says at the top that it's the list of contaminated or potentially contaminated sites, hazardous waste facilities as defined under the Connecticut general statutes. The next document, here is the demolition permit and I'm going to stop. I don't know, can you see the demolition permit?
Yes.
You see, this is the demolition permit. Here is a letter that confirms, and this is to the building division of the town of Danbury from October of 2019. This letter is to confirm that all demolition debris from the structure of 333 Main Street will be disposed of at City Carding Transfer Station at 8 Viaduct Road in Stamford, Connecticut. Next document is, this is a Rockhead intake form. And this document is from Rockhead's records and it shows that on April 16th of 2020, you can see the loads and the time of the loads of materials that were brought. That's April of 2020. Concrete with rebar or wire from the Danbury demolition 233, I'm sorry, 333 Main Street demo. A brownfield site. And so I provided this with respect to approximately four properties. I've also provided you with information on other properties where the demolition permit indicated that the demolition material would be disposed of in a facility and somehow it found its way to 64 Cambridge Drive. And again, demolition debris with rebar. Once again, this applicant cannot process materials, cannot process concrete with rebar or wire in it onsite and separate those materials. Certainly, that material cannot be used as fill on this site. And this, I, I'm not going to take up the time of this commission. You have to follow the documents, but it underscores the need and really, I, I hope that this commission feels compelled and understands the gravity of the situation and the importance of getting to the bottom of this. I am, I can't emphasize enough, there was a lot happening here. And once again, the applicant is kind of blithely asked for waivers and blithely asked for this filling permit and wants to just get on its way and basically run this facility as, as basically a processing facility. And this commission should not even begin to get to that issue until you address the fundamental issues presented by the violation. I would also suggest to the commission that at present, there's, we believe, and I understand that the applicant will suggest that inland wetlands did not find that it was a water service, but in our, in our opinion, this commission should inspect the property and I urge this commission to go visit the site again, because I know many of you were involved with the past tour on the site and see if you concur as to the nature of the body of water that exists, presently exists on that site. We have reason to believe and evidence that the applicant has been, and I guess the applicant indicated that they are pumping that out. I think that may be an area of interest and inquiry to the commission as it considers this application. I do think a site visit is in line, is in order. And at this point, I think I am somewhat hampered without having our, all of our consultants here, but I think I've given the commission quite a bit to think about. I'm sure that there will be more to address, but at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I will, I just thought of also that we question and strenuously dispute the, strenuously dispute the, the definition of clean fill that the applicant has expressed to this commission, but we will get into that when we address the specific allegations of our petition intervening. I think I've used up enough of the commission's time this evening and I thank you for your patience. I'm happy to answer any questions. I can show the commission a picture, an aerial picture of the site and the quality of the extent of the bottled water there, if the commission is inclined to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I have one question.
I'm going to allow the commissioners to ask any questions at this point, starting by right. Any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Green?
No questions.
Mr. Green, I think maybe you should go into your definition of clean fill because there's no guarantee that this will be continued. We haven't decided that yet. It could be closed tonight.
I, I think that I would defer to Evan Glass, who's our hydrogeologist and is expert frankly on that. But it is our position that, first of all, once again, that it's, I don't believe that this commission has within its jurisdiction the ability to allow this applicant to accept and demolition material to process rather than not be clean fill. I would also, I better leave it to, I better leave it to our consultant to define the clean fill issue frankly. I did provide this commission with a memo on that and I'd be happy to have it here. I mean, I could read it into the record or I could. Bear with me for one moment.
Yeah, if they're arguing with the deep definition of clean fill, I'd like to know what the argument is, unless they don't want to give it and then that's fine, we can continue. But.
Didn't we just see it on the screen?
We saw the deep definition of, yeah. And then they said that it was wrong without any explanation why. So I'd like to know why.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Glass on this.
He's not here, okay. My other question, what is, and I don't know if you want to even answer this, but what is the goal at the end of the day? What would your client like to see this property be? Because we've had a lot of discussions over the past two years about trying to fix a problem and you guys have brought up a lot of issues with the way it's being fixed. You don't have a end game. But what is the ideal situation that we would like to see here at the end of the day?
First of all, we want to be sure that the watershed and that the groundwater is clean on this site. We want to be sure that this is a clean site going forward so that we can all develop our properties going forward. And we don't feel that the investigation has been adequate. We don't feel that the applicant has been forthcoming. As we, as I've demonstrated tonight, this commission has asked repeatedly for the very information that has apparently been provided, has not been provided. So we want to be sure, first of all, that this site is clean. And that's, that's step one. And step two, we feel that the applicant should follow the process, should get a permit and should address, the applicant comes in with unclean hands here.
Can I interject? I need to interject here. The question is, what, what is your proposal for to do with this property? I don't want to hear what they have done wrong or what they, what is your proposal to fix this problem?
Our proposal is for this commission to receive all of the materials of everything that this applicant has that has been received at this site, which is readily available to the applicant. Our request is that this commission hire a environmental professional, a consultant, to review all the materials and render opinion to this commission as to what should be done with this site to bring it into safe conformity and as a site that may perhaps be filled or put to another purpose, but not to offer the shortcut, not to offer the shortcut that this applicant seems to be providing. And this applicant should be accountable for its conduct over the past two years.
Have any other questions, Commissioner Condon?
Has Mr. Metropolis ever expressed interest in purchasing this property?
I don't. I don't. I can, I can, I'm not sure is the answer.
Okay. Any other?
Does it, I'm not sure how that matters, but I'm happy to answer it.
Go, go ahead.
Let me, I'll check.
Is he on right now?
He's on the phone.
So confused. What? Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Metropolis indicates that he's presently muted. If you unmute Mr. Metropolis, he can answer that.
We're going to address the violation. I don't care if you wanted to buy the property or if anyone wanted to buy it. I try to address violation and if clean.
We're, we're happy to answer the question, Mr. Air, if you unmute Mr. Metropolis.
Just give us one second.
On that.
What's his initials?
PM.
MM.
PM.
Don't do CA. We'll all be in trouble.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. My main PC, I guess, is muted. I'm on my cell phone. A question, Commissioner Condon, you were asking about my interest to purchase the property previously. And yes, I, when I bought 36 Timothy, it was offered to me. John Kimball, when we figured out how to fill the hole, he said it would cost $8 million and it was going to be 1.2 million cubic yards, and I walked away. Apparently, John Kimball was also working with Arnold Karp, and they decided that they would start an illegal recycle facility. And my goal, hold on, my goal is all the construction debris that was filled, there was what I call the southern crater. There's a crater that you can see on the screen that's full of water. The other crater was just as deep and just as wide, and Rick Schultz got lots of pictures of them, of it. That was filled with asphalt. The definition, by the way, of, of clean fill does not include asphalt under four inches in size, according to Robert Eisner, the head of DEEP. And that's why there is an investigation of this property. We are quite simply, my point, the best way to fix this, dig out the contaminated material, hire an LEP, test it, and then we'll see where we're at. And most likely, I'm, my, my, my opinion is that DEEP's going to make them dig out the proper, the material that was imported from out of state, Bridgeport, wherever. Once that's cleaned, my suggestion is just fill the hole with water. It's a pretty lake. How about that? Why should Mr. Karp, who wants to be paid 20 bucks a cubic yard of construction debris, run an operation that he was found to be in violation of when he was selling native natural material for the last year and a half? So, any other questions?
Well, no, I just, I kind of wanted to get to what we thought the plan would be to see this fixed, and that's kind of why I asked.
Yeah. And my opinion is, and wait, fill it with water.
Wait, is, is, okay. I mean, it's always an option, so thank you. That's where I wanted to see where we're going with this.
I'd be the first to get a fishing permit. It was like.
Yes.
Attorney Green, did you, you said you sent out documentation. How long ago was that sent out?
You mean to the commission?
Yeah, to the commission.
It was sent yesterday, and it's on, it's up on the website.
Do we have that?
Yeah, yeah. He's, you're just going to be delivered to you.
Oh, it's not here?
No, it's a lot of.
Yeah, they all sent it yesterday.
It's a lot of pages.
So there are.
Which you all will receive.
There are six.
We're going to put this meeting open anyway.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to find out, because somebody was telling me it was a year ago, and I was like.
No, that was, that was the last application.
What he was showing us was.
What he was showing on the screen was?
Specifically, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the discussion of the brown sites, that was sent to us the last time we heard this applicant, or a form of this application, correct? Or was that what was sent yesterday?
No, we didn't have the materials from the applicant's own internal documents showing that it had received these materials from brown field sites. By the way, among, I've seen hundreds of pages of documents, and there's a, there's a massive amount of material demolition debris that was received from Stratford High School. There's Wade's Garage in Stratford, which is a brown field site. There's a hat factory, Norwalk property, which was formerly, apparently, a hat factory with the brown field site. And.
Sorry, when did you, when did you receive these?
I saw them, I was provided with a thumb drive this, well, actually, a week ago, but I didn't have an opportunity to go through the thumb drive in detail because.
All right, so we're going to be provided with these, that information. Do you have any other questions?
I'm happy to share everything I have, every other.
Thank you. You already have. Thank you, Mr. Green. Commissioner Mayne, questions?
No questions for Attorney Green.
No questions.
Thank you. I have no questions either. Are there any other members of your team that would like to address the commission tonight, Mr. Green?
No, I would defer that, if I may. And I apologize because we did intend to proceed, but we're obviously hampered.
Thank you. All right, then we're going to go now, well, to the public. Any members of the public that would like to, any questions to Mr. Green? Yes, Mr. Lettico.
Just for clarification, is this just for Mr. Green or also for the applicant?
Just for Mr. Green.
Good evening. My name is Joel Leniker. I reside at 70 Hunting Town Road in the town of Monroe.
Sorry, Joel, you might have to talk into the mic for them, sorry.
My name is Joel Leniker. I reside at 70 Hunting Town Road in the town of Monroe. Question specifically for Mr. Green is I'll piggyback to what is the, what is their vision for the site? What are we trying to accomplish? And I understand that this is an industrial park, and what would the intervenor like to see this project become?
A lake.
Thank you, Mr. Leniker.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, are you available?
We, yeah, sure.
Did you hear a question?
Yes, we'd like to see this property become a clean site or be assured that it is a clean site, that the watershed on the site is protected. And from there, we can, as my client said, from there, we can take it from there, and that's up to the owner and up to the commission. But before that, before we are assured of the condition of the site, the commission should consider any uses.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Are there any men, other members of the public here tonight that would like to address Mr. Green? If not, then I'm going to go to the commissioners to address the applicant. Any questions for the applicant, starting on my right?
Yeah. In regards to the de-watering, is there a specific great drill drain?
So we'll, we'll, we'll excavate that, we'll, the, we want to de-water that all the way down to, so all the water's gone.
Right.
So, because we have to be able to place compacted fill in that area, and the best way to do that is in a dry condition. So we would propose to de-water all the way down to the elevation that it was previously de-watered to prior to all the activity stopping and allowing groundwater naturally attenuate. Additionally, you got to remember, this is a very large area, so the picture that was presented on the screen before was, was a good one, because you got to remember, this was a quarry activity or excavation activity in bedrock. So as they kept going down, you know, there's nowhere else for that stormwater to go. So not only had that reached natural attenuation with groundwater to elevation about 410, there's also all that stormwater, which just drains towards that, that part of the site. So we would, we would de-water all the way down to, to hard surface so we could place that material in a dry condition.
Right, but will it be done slow enough to not cause flooding in the area?
Yes, it is. And actually, one of the things that we did from a, from a soil erosion design standpoint is previously, that area had been de-watered into the municipal basin on the west side of the site, which then had some adverse impacts to some of the other rural pools on that end of the property. So we're actually de-watering to the southeast corner to put that into a tributary to the West Branch of the aquatic, so that we would not have that same flooding issues. And if it be done so at a rate that it wouldn't have any adverse impacts downstream.
Thank you.
And again, to another point, we did, that water was tested, and that water is clean. There's no chemical constituents or anything that's problematic or has any issues.
Any chance you could bring material onto the property that's already been processed so you're not processing material on this property?
So the, the challenge is trying to import 493,000 cubic yards is not an easy task. And frankly, I wanted to clarify a couple of things, because demolition debris is not clean fill. Those are different things. And concrete foundations that may have some rebar in it is still clean fill. It needs to be processed to take out that deleterious material, that, that rebar. That gets put aside and, you know, dealt with separately, but the concrete itself can be processed and placed as fill, as structural fill, to support future developments and to fill this hole. So the, the, the concept of trying to only source material that doesn't need to be processed, frankly, is, is somewhat of an impossible task to source that much material in a reasonable timeframe to allow for the site to be filled.
So I understand that. What I kind of meant was, is there another site that this material could be processed at and then brought here? I know Mr. Karp owns some of their property, and it seems to be a bit of an issue. I'm just wondering if that is a consideration to process it off-site and then bring it onsite?
I, I don't think that's a, you know, it's not a, a part of this activity is, is creating these stockpiles to be able to place this material in engineers. Because as you place those, that lifts, you have contractors, rollers, and, and testing labs to test the compaction and things like that, and to try to material, you know, material handle that multiple times just makes it, it makes it impossible.
Commissioner Condon, it's Arnold Karp. We have basically reached out to anybody in Fairfield County who has fill and said we would need it. We spent a large part, part of the summer at one point when we were allowed to take fill. Most of it does not pass muster to get it to the residential standards that we have put in our protocol. A lot of DOT projects, that is not clean enough for us to bring onsite. So it will be a challenge, and, you know, Attorney Warren will speak to about concrete with rebar in it. But, you know, again, the, the pressure on us is to find material that meets all of the requirements. And, you know, anything that's next to highway has led from the 50s. Yet, they're not bad people, but when we went and tested it. So again, I need things that, you know, almost like virgin sites to find what would be suitable by our own criteria.
I, I think it's also important to point out, too, that, that processing, you know, that can be viewed as different things, right? Construction debris gets processed at a transfer station. That is not what, what we're talking about when we're saying processing. We're talking about simply sorting, crushing, and grating. That's the processing that we're discussing. And that's, you know, that's, that's something that would be done with, with that clean fill.
And I guess the, my other question, as you mentioned, taking the native air to fill the, the deep hole initially, nothing else is going to be coming off of this property, right? Everything else is, has it been cleared? There's no, we're just talking really about a fill permit?
Yes.
Shouldn't be anything else being.
We're not, we're not proposing importing and exporting or any of that. We're, we're simply trying to source and place to make this a developable piece, developable piece of property.
There is nothing, unless we found something that was not suitable either by size or width to leave the property. Only thought is, yeah, to get this bump filled as quickly as you can.
All right. Thank you.
Have you ever done an EIA on this?
An environmental impact assessment?
Yeah.
No, those are really only done for state projects as part of a secret process.
This is a huge project. Huge project.
Oh, it's.
It's a huge project. And so we would have to, I mean, environmental impact study taken to all, all the aspects of it. The trucks coming in, the crusher, the air, the quality of the water, and all that, right? Because this is a huge project.
I don't think that, you know, the, that environmental impact assessment, which is something that the state does for state projects, not something that's required of any private.
Yeah, but this is a huge project. I'm just saying that.
It's a, I'd say it's, it's a, it's a big project, and it's a big undertaking, but it's a very simple.
So you're going to be crushing, we're going to, you're going to be crushing up there, right?
We would be, we would be, no, this isn't a, this is not a crushing activity. This is not.
You're going to use a crush to separate the material or whatever, right? Have to compact it, and you have to put it down smaller pieces, so you're going to have to use a crusher.
Yes.
Get it to that. No, I'm just saying, I just want to be fair on what we're talking about. The other question I have to ask you is if clean material that you're going to put in the hole, which you're talking about, the tailings or the dust, the stone dust, has that been tested?
It has. Yes.
Have it?
Nothing.
Metals in it?
No.
Oh, there's no kind of crack, none of that?
Nothing that is not naturally occurring in the material?
Metals in, in the dust. Because I talked to somebody in the groundwater, and they say that you can increase the pH if there's metals in that dust. Is that true or not?
I'm not an, I'm not an environmental professional to really comment on that, but I don't think that.
Do you have one there with you?
We do not have an LEP with us, no? Because again, this site's been, you know, tested.
There's a report from the LEP that they've submitted to us.
Yeah, we do have a report from Derek Jones. And, and I'll just invite Jane Warren real quick to just comment on something that was bringing my ear, and I think we'd rather hear from her.
Hi, Jane Warren. Yes, Jane Kimball Warren. And I, all of the materials that have been tested, the soil, the surface water, the groundwater, all comply with standards. You can find arsenic, lead, iron naturally occurring in soil.
No, I, I understand all that. I, I do a lot of research on this because it's a GAA water site.
Of course.
This is a high-quality water site.
Yes.
And we've hit groundwater.
Yes.
My concern is what you put into groundwater, is it going to increase the temperature? Is it going to increase the pH? Is it going to increase the iron? Because people are in wells on that groundwater. I need those answers that if that's going to happen. I think that's why we need to have our own licensed professional that can answer those questions for this commission. Because I don't want to rely on your expert, I don't rely on their expert, I don't want to rely on the expert for what we need to make a decision on what we're going to do with this property.
So, so let me point out that not only do you have WSP, who's a nationally recognized environmental consulting firm, and our, and our licensed environmental professional, the town in the wetlands proceedings involving this property retained or had the applicant pay for, so the town could retain Arcadis Engineering, another nationally recognized firm. They reviewed all of the materials, all of the sampling, all of the, all of the documentation for this, and, and agreed that there is no, there is no impact.
I believe Arcadis, because I watched all those meetings, I believe Arcadis left up his commission to decide what we're going to fill the hole with.
I, I would disagree with that, because I think that that, that area was something that the Wetlands Commission paid great focus to and attention to. And the Wetlands Commission is charred with protecting natural resources. They concluded that the activity. I I would disagree with that because I think that 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 area was something that the Wetlands Commission paid great focus to and attention to. And the Wetlands Commission is charged with protecting natural resources. They concluded that the activities as proposed would not have any adverse impact. That's been reinforced by our LEP and it was reinforced by the LEP hired from Arcadis on the town's behalf.
Okay. All right, well, like I said, I'm only one commissioner. I believe it's an injustice if we don't have a licensed professional to review the material. I mean, there's a lot of material here. And I think that, you know, I mean, what about groundwater and metal wells? Have you put any kind of in your application where you're going to put in wells so that we can test the groundwater?
We have wells there that exist onsite that are downgrading of the area to be filled. Those wells have been tested, which is also downgrading of any of the material that's been stocked on the site.
How many wells do you have?
Three, three or four.
I I believe that, you know, I I've done a lot of research on this because I'm concerned about filling a hole that hit groundwater. And you hit groundwater, I mean, that hole is filled to the top. And I believe it's not all, you know, rainwater. I believe.
No, absolutely not. We've justified that groundwater attenuates at four, elevation four ten, which is why we're proposing to place native material to elevation four eleven above that groundwater. So after that material is.
Five foot? And the other question I have, that's why I'm saying, we need an LP because I don't know, because you've hit groundwater, you've blasted over there, you.
Previous owner.
I got, no, I have all that. I I understand that. You drain the wetlands and so we don't even know by hydrating the wetlands if the wetlands would ever come back because really nobody knows that, right?
Well, the Wetlands Commission came to that conclusion by granting our approval.
What I'm saying is like, well, they weren't sure. They said you'd have to try it out. Or I would, I watched all the meetings and so, I don't know how many other commissioners watched the meetings, but I did. And so I have concern about the water quality. I you you don't understand, it's the biggest thing that I have concern about. You contaminate this site and then it turns out to be a disaster for this town of Monroe. That's what happens.
I don't know who you is, but this applicant did not contaminate.
And I'm saying, if for some reason it gets contaminated, I'm not saying that it's going to happen, but I'm saying if it happens, then this is something that we'd have to deal with for years.
But but I want, I want to make a point. I want to make a point because the important thing is that if this applicant did something that caused contamination, this applicant would be responsible.
No.
Take care of that. And frankly, the DEP, who is the regulatory body empowered for the state of Connecticut to oversee and be aware and manage this type of thing, is engaged and actively working on this site. We we've discussed it, the intervenor discussed it, they're engaged in their investigation. They've conducted several site visits and they are the people who are responsible for this.
I getting back to that.
The commission, the commission has, this commission and many others, you're charged with administering zoning regulations and and making sure that the the safe, orderly development of the town. This commission has received several applications with environmentally contaminated properties. Not once has this commission ever looked at the environmental integrity of that property, gone through analytical analysis. You're not charged to do that. That's not your role. The DEP's role is to do that investigation. The commission should be confident and proud that they're, they're in, they're here. They understand what's going on because it's their responsibility and they have people who are calling that daily to make sure that this thing gets worked at.
Where is it? Where is the DEP right at right now in this investigation?
So they have been involved in this site probably for two years. I've been working with them for probably a year and a half answering.
Who have you been working with?
Who have I been working with? Robert Eisner, Mark Jepson, George Duse, Doug Hoskins, Karen Allen.
And where are they with this investigation?
So to my knowledge, they've been provided with, well, I provided them with everything that I've asked for. I personally have provided them with everything that they've requested. They have found no violations. There have been, as you heard the intervenor say, there have been complaints filed in every division of the DEEP because they haven't gained any traction with the DEP. They they continue to file complaint after complaint and the they, the DEP has been out to the site several times. They inspected it personally and found no issues.
You stated that they they haven't found, they they have found no violations?
Correct.
As of this time?
Correct.
Okay, but they're still investigating?
What are, what are they still investigating?
I'm just asking you, is it, is it closed or it's not closed?
There's no, there's no closure that we're going to get. DEP doesn't close. DEP can decide to enforce or not.
All right.
They've had this, they've had.
I have one more question to ask you about, just asking about that. What if, what if there, and I'm not saying this had anything to Mr. Carp, I'm saying with the previous owner, what if there's contaminated material in that site?
Okay.
What would the DEP fire happen?
The DEP has been provided with all of the analytical analytical data, has reviewed that data and has found no violations. If there were a problem, the EP, I've spoken with Robert Eisner about this property several times, he's the director of enforcement at DEP. If there were a problem, they could order that the site be remediated. They have not done so because they have not found there to be a problem.
And when was the last time you talked to Eisner?
Last time I spoke with him, I have to look in my notes, I don't know, maybe August?
And how about Mark Jepson?
I don't think I've ever spoken with Mark. I've only emailed Mark Jepson.
When was the last time?
Last time I emailed Mark Jepson was probably a week or so ago.
And who's handling the case? Mark Jepson?
There's no case. I mean, the the intervenor keeps filing complaints. There's no case. They've brought no enforcement action. Mark Jepson is the one who's been out to the property twice.
Well, I've spoken to Mark Jepson. Going back pretty, pretty long time ago, a while ago, he requested a certain amount of documentation from you people.
Right.
To, especially with certain sites. And I believe that investigation is still going on. I don't think they've closed it out yet.
They don't close out.
I understand that, but it's still going on. I I'm just saying, it's not closed out. You're saying it's closed out, but they don't close it out. But I'm saying that.
If he had an issue, then for two years now, he's, he's, he's been to the site. He went out, I believe, in February of 2020. He was out again in August of 2021, three months ago, four months ago. If there were an issue that they thought should be addressed, they would be on Mr. Carp's doorstep tomorrow saying, this is an issue that.
I I don't want to sit here and argue with you because first of all, okay, I talked to Mark.
I'm not arguing.
I don't want to argue with you, but, but I talked to Mark Jepson a long time ago and it's going back a while ago because I wanted to find out what the deal was with this site. And Mark Jepson said to me that because Mr. Soli at our last meeting kept on stating that DEP didn't have any issues. I talked to Mark Jepson and he said to me that he requested documentation from the applicant and never received it. He requested it three or four times and never received it.
Okay.
Now, I guess he finally received some and he's probably going through it, but that takes a long period of time to go through that.
He's already been through it. He asked for additional clarification. That was provided to him. For him to say, you know, for for Mark to say that we didn't provide answers to his questions, Robert Eisner and I have worked together or opposite of each other for 35 years. They know where to find me. Anytime they ask me for something, we submitted it. Sometimes we didn't understand exactly what they were looking for. For example, they said, can we have all of your sampling material? We provided sampling material of the stockpiles. Three months later, they said, oh, it wasn't the stockpile information, we wanted the groundwater sampling. Okay, we provide the groundwater sampling. I can't tell you why DEP takes as long as they do things, but.
No, and and they're understaffed and I understand that and and believe me, I understand the states are understaffed. But like I'm saying to you is that, what I'm saying is that basically I think the investigation is still going on. That's why I'm being about.
And that, listen, if the investigation is still going on, there is no way for us to 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 get a closure of something that isn't, they don't close sites, they just decide to enforce or not to enforce. They have not enforced. But that is, if they were, if they wanted to enforce, that is within their jurisdiction. You do not have to 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 deal with that issue. This is not your issue. There is another whole.
The only reason why I have concerns is because I have concerns is because we haven't been involved with this site with all the material that's brought into this site. We have never, ever gave a fill permit to that site. And how many yards of material have been brought into that site? I don't even know. How many, how many yards of material have been brought into that site illegally? I I I don't know off the top of my head.
Oh, hold on. Before you say illegally, okay? I was there the last time, I believe, with Mark Jepson and a local police officer, the head of the department, I believe, who toured the property. So Leon, when you say to people, especially who are sitting on this side, that Mark Jepson, okay, he was there, he came with a police officer. I ran from my office in Fairfield County up to meet him. They, we walked him through. They didn't say, geez, you guys have an issue. They left the property. As Attorney Warren continues to say, they don't tell you, they do not give you an all clear. If they think there is a problem, they will sort of issue their findings, that enforcement immediately. Okay, these are, these are not, but 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 this is not where.
It's not even what I'm getting at. I'm not really getting at that. I'm not. I'm really not. I know they're doing their investigation. What I'm getting at is that we have no idea what material, you gave us all these documentations and all this stuff, lost material that went there. You must be able to calculate how much ended up on that site. There's some way of knowing that.
The site was an active quarry operation for 13 years.
I'm talking about the fill.
Stockpile and the.
Talking about it.
And frankly, as part of the past application, which I'm not sure if it was submitted for the record for this application, but we did provide manifest for the material that had been in the property, excuse me. And as part of that, the 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 statements that were made previously about, you know, they just found this a week ago, that's not factually true because the materials provided as part of the last application, last application said exactly where material came from and what it was. So this isn't something that was just assembled a week ago, but but to that end.
But Leon, all the material, it has been tested by an LEP, okay? Would they found anything on their various holes? Okay, so not only did we dig them with an excavator, but they made us come with a drill rig instead of going just 25 feet, we went 55 feet. They found nothing that was a concern on the property, okay? So we continue to try to prove any negative that there is something wrong with the property. The property, okay, while it was quarried, things went up. During ownership, and I'm happy to address Attorney Kimball and John Kimball's involvement, none of them have an equity interest. When I purchased this, not from Mr. Kimball, but the bank, this property was purchased by the bank in New Canaan, okay? Part of my requirement was that Mr. Kimball, who knew the property best of anyone, okay, stayed on as a consultant with me. That became a sticking matter when I bought it with the bank because they said, we have no way to do that. I struck an agreement with Mr. Kimball because he knows the history of the property better than anyone else. And Attorney Warren was hired by me because she knows the property better than anyone else. But the relevancy of this on a planning and zoning matter, I mean, we continue to talk about water that is cleaner than anybody in the town of Monroe swims in all summer, okay? Look at the testing data. It's unbelievable. The water is almost drinkable and it would be if it wasn't a natural occurring pond. So.
And to that point, DEP is so engaged. As a, as a resident, I'm glad that they're engaged and looking at this and they're investigating, you said, because if something happens, they're going to hold someone accountable and responsible.
So then you wouldn't have a problem with us getting our own license, right?
I don't think, I I'm not sure the commission wants to set a precedent nor or is it even in there, or is it even in their purview? Because part of what, you know, the the DEP does that, that is their charge. Planning and zoning commissions regulate the planning and zoning regulations and determine whether or not something complies with the regulations.
I know, but.
The goal on this commission is.
Your plan may be different than other licensed professionals' plan to look it over and give us some input. That's what I'm saying. I say it's just not, you're one engineer.
Is this commission gonna, if if the commission wants to start having applicants, you know, if the commission wants to start dictating to applicants how they remediate properties, I'm not sure that's charged in the statute supports the commission going down those avenues.
I think this commission is here, we're here to address a violation. We're not here.
This commission is here to consider an excavation fill permit application.
Or a violation.
Regulations. This commit, no, this commission, this application is not filed in response to a violation from this commission. This commission issued.
Didn't we give you a cease.
Stockpiling, which was communicated to the commission by the applicant that they intended to do so based on the regulations.
This commission not give you a cease and desist order to bring in, to bring in no more fill into that property and to not stockpile any more property after that. We gave the cease and desist a long time ago. I believe that we have a cease and desist on this property?
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah, but it was for them.
Just noted.
Right, wasn't it for them? Digging.
No, it was from, from.
So bringing a material.
And removing material.
Removing material.
Right. So this is a violation or cease and desist.
This application, this application addresses that violation.
I got all that. So you're acting like that we're holding you to a different standard than a normal application. No, this is a totally different standard. This property was mined that it wasn't supposed to be mined. And I understand that Mr. Carp brought the property, but he brought the problem. And I understand that. Now this commission needs to solve the problem or try to work with you and the surrounding property owners, I guess, to solve the problem. And that's where we stand here. That's why we need, I believe, that we're doing an injustice to this town if we don't hire a licensed professional to look at this and help us along with this. And that's, I'm only one commissioner and I move along.
Thank you, Commissioner Ambrose.
But can I just address a couple of points?
Yes.
So we saw the same pattern before the Inland Wetlands Commission. The intervenor argued to Inland Wetlands Commission that they should go out and really do DEP's job. And we didn't fight it at that time. Inland Wetlands Commission hired their own LEP to review all the information, all the testing results and came back and said that the testing was adequate, that there were no problems on the property. We're seeing the exact same pattern here. The intervenor is trying to get this commission to do DEP's job. And with all respect to you all, you're not equipped to do DEP's job. Your job is to vet this application with regarding the excavation and fill regulations. And so I would suggest that this idea of combining jurisdictions with the DEP is a is a bad precedent to set and probably is beyond the purview of this commission. So I I first, I want to get that on the record, Mr. Ambrose. The other thing that's troubling, Mr. Ambrose.
Can you?
My understanding of the law is that commissioners should not be going and conducting their own investigations.
Wait, wait a minute, hold on.
And my.
I'm not, I'm not.
Did you talk to directly to someone at DEP to discuss this property?
What's that?
Did you reach out directly to someone at DEP to discuss this property?
I talked to, I talked to people in groundwater. I talked.
Did you, did this, did you discuss this particular property with somebody at DEP? Not in the rec, not on the record?
I just, I, no, I discussed to this property, to DEP, Mark Jepson on record.
Well, no, 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 no. When I say on the record, Mr. Ambrose, I mean in the context of the entire commission.
At the last meeting that you had, when you were in front of us and you told me straight out that this is not this commission's obligation to DEP's job. And so when Mr. Soli kept on telling me that.
You're not answering my question.
What are you talking? I talked to Mark Jepson, I told you I did.
Right, and you did that without the benefit of having the entire commission hear your questions and hear the responses. Is that correct?
That's not what I called the commission about. I called DEP to find out if there was any. I called DEP to find out if there was any violations on the property.
Right, you asked for information about this.
Then.
Mr. Ambrosi, answer my question. Thank you. I've got that on the record. I appreciate.
It's great that it's on the record because I'm telling you what he said to me. He said that he asked for documentation that your client never sent him. And that's why I said to Mr. Soli in the meeting.
Yes, did Mr. Jepson ever tell you there are any violations on this property?
I didn't ask him for any violations. I, I asked him if, if he has investigated the property, and he said he asked for documentation.
Any violations.
He said he, he doesn't, he couldn't tell you because he asked your client for documentation and you didn't provide it, until recently, I would imagine.
You've already said that, and we've admitted to that, and we now told you that we provided.
I'm saying to you is, don't sit here and try to badger me on something that's a violation.
Nobody else, but nobody can badger.
I'm not badgering.
I would try that, I would try that. I apologize. I apologize.
That's okay.
So anyway, I do, uh, just want to make sure that it's clear to you that, and again, I, I know you have to do, you're, you're in charge of the planning and zoning regulations and the excavation. I understand that. But I do, there is a parallel to what we've seen here and what we saw before the Inland Wetlands Commission. And the way the Inland Wetlands Commission handled this incident is it put a condition in their approval, number E, it says, "All applicable state and local permits will be applied for, including but not limited to Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, part of Star York." So there's a condition already in existence. We can reiterate that condition with regard to an approval that you hopefully provide to my client in the context of this application, that they must get all applicable DEP approvals. So I, the only other thing I want to address is this idea of, well, there could be pollution in the future. There could be a problem with the groundwater, uh, at this site. With all respect, planning and zoning commissions cannot deny applications based on the fact that there could be something, or there might be something. The evidence that you have before you, and even the intervenor has provided you with zero evidence that there's any contamination at this site now. There's no evidence that there's any groundwater contamination. There's no evidence that any of the materials that have been brought to this site are contaminated, and that is where this should stay. Thank you. I, I apologize, Mr. Ambrosi, I really do. I lost my, I lost a little bit there.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Can I just, um.
Sure.
Say Warren again, I just want to just.
Why not?
I'll be nice and brief. Just two things that Attorney Green mentioned. You were, you were, you haven't received yet, apparently, but you will be receiving a pile that's perhaps three or four times bigger than this, which is the documentation that Attorney Green submitted last night. Um, the bulk of this document is the list of hazardous waste sites that he put up on the screen. You'll note that there's about 100 of those sites in Monroe. Um, they are not, let me just read you, um, because he didn't submit this part of the list, but I'll just read you from DEP's cover sheet to the, to the list of contaminated facilities, which says that, um, some of the sites have been investigated already, fully remediated. The, any sites' presence or location on the list does not imply, imply a degree of contamination or relative priority. The list of sites that he's providing to you, which I think is completely outside of your jurisdiction, again, he keeps trying to go to DEP to make an issue, and they're not DEP, not anyone in any division. So he's coming here and putting the DEP's stuff in your lap, which you don't need to deal with. But this list, um, as Kevin said, the fact that, that some of the properties on this list of hazardous sites has been sent off doesn't mean that, that CND waste or CND materials from these sites has ended up at this location. Clean fill has come to this location. CND waste goes to other CND permitted facilities, not to this site. Um, and then the final, final thing I just want to point out, I think you've caught on to Attorney Green's throwing things out about clean fill. He doesn't like, he said, he doesn't like the definition of clean fill. He disputes the definition of clean fill. I'm sorry, the definition of clean fill is in the statutes and the regulations. It is what it is. We're operating within the statutes and the regulations that we have. Attorney Green and the intervenor may not like the definition of clean fill, but that's what the law provides, and we're operating within it. So the fact that Evan Glass isn't here tonight doesn't really matter because the definition is the definition, and he may not like the definition, but we, we comply with the definition of clean fill. And I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Attorney Warren. Let's go to Commissioner Mayne for any questions.
Wow. All right. Oh, that ache. So, two real quick things, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. Stratford High School is at your facility.
Yes.
Was it originally supposed to go to your facility from day one?
Demolition debris for Stratford High School went to a different location.
Okay. What, what came to your facility from Stratford High School was supposed to come to you from day one?
I, I have no idea.
Prior to our ownership, Stratford High School came to this facility. Not the construction and demo debris for what is considered the clean fill, which is any concrete, okay, and that's what, again, there was a picture up on the screen, there is a mountain of that, that is contested by, uh, the environmental, uh, guys.
Good to go.
It is, it is good to go.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm simple. The one thing I do want to touch on that, what Mr. Green said was that stuff from, from Danbury that they were talking about that was contaminated, that, that ended up at, at your, ended up at your property, correct?
There, there was no contaminated material from Danbury imported to this property.
Okay, so why was it on that list? And what is that list?
So, so there, as, as Attorney Warren mentioned, there are a lot of properties on the list that have, that have issues, right?
Sure.
I want to say, I think there was one in Stratford called Wade's Garage.
Sure.
So that was a, that was a super fun site that had, um, soil contamination from the prior use on the property, right? So as part of that remediation effort, they remediated the soils, they took that contaminated soils to the appropriate places to dispose of contaminated soils, and they demolished the building. The concrete from that building, that's clean, came to this property. And the manifests provided by the applicant as part of the previous application call exactly that. They list exactly that.
Okay.
What he, what, I believe what.
I said, okay.
She's, she's okay, we're good.
Oh, good, okay, thank you.
But that also goes with any of the other properties?
Mr. Carp, I said, okay. I mean, you want to keep going?
We're trying to save you a lot of reading because you got a lot of material that they submitted.
Listen, I got, I got two kids at home that can read to me. Don't you worry. Uh, I want to talk about the, the liner at 411. What is it made of? How are you doing it? So get to, well, let's get to some, some of the stuff about.
Yeah, it's the technical stuff, absolutely, that's great. So, yeah. So the, the liner isn't proposed at 411. The native material is being proposed to be filled.
To 411?
Yes. And then from that point on, clean fill is coming up, and then the liner is proposed above that.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, the, the, so the liner is proposed roughly two to six feet below proposed finished grade. So that allows so that when it rains in this area in the future.
What is this liner made of?
Um, we went back and forth with Wetlands because they wanted, we, we, first we're going to do an impervious clay liner, and then they came back and they wanted, uh, 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 poly. So I think it's in, we have a detail for it, but let me just pull it up so I can speak So on sheet, uh, three point of two of our plans that we're proposing that, um, impervious liner, which is, just trying to see if there's a, uh, thickness on the mill poly. Yeah, I think it looks like a 40 mil poly.
And, and you think that's thick enough that when you're putting rocks and people, not people walking on it, but I'm sure at some point some equipment's going to be driven over it and all that kind of stuff, it's going to withstand the pressures to take that?
It is, it actually, it, it is. And, and because we're putting in the native material, the native material that's there is the quarry screening, so it's a refined, um, material, so.
You don't think it'll rip that liner?
Well, no, because then the other thing is too, is that liner is there for when it's in its finished conditions before it's developed. The goal is to build a building there. When you build a building, the parking in the building itself will act as that impervious liner, and that water will get collected, treated.
I'm just talking about in the meantime until you do that.
Yes, no, we're confident that that liner is sufficient to, uh, to withstand any, uh, you know, activity about it.
Hmm, okay. I don't know about that, but okay. Um, the native materials you talked about filling up from, from zero to 411. Um, I'm a little concerned about stone dust. I've, I understand what you have on your property is perfect and, and came down from the hand of God. I get it. I get it. I get it's been tested by 72 people and, and we're all good. I still have concerns about the stone dust and, um, again, piggybacking on Commissioner Ambrosi, that I have read some of that stuff too, that it does increase pH and could increase that kind of stuff. How much of that stone dust do you plan on putting into it?
Well, we'd want to use all native material to fill that area, so.
It's not just stone dust. Basically, it's the overburden. So it's a mix of the stone dust and it's, you were to look at the quarry as we walked through, it's, it's the stuff that was stockpiled on the right-hand side. Okay, so the first part of that is the, say, the native material, which is rock and the overburden way before we get into the stone dust.
And overburden for the commission's certification, when you're excavating down from topsoil to bedrock, the overburden is everything in between. So it's all the glacial till that you find under your lawn and then your darts and everything. It's all that native material.
So you're, so you're proposing that stone dust, you're not going to just start scooping it and dumping it in and dumping it in and dumping it in and all that kind of stuff? I feel better.
Fix it with everything that we have.
Okay. Uh, ceramics are on the list as a, as a viable clean fill? Am I correct about that?
It is in the definition, the DEP's definition.
Talk to me about ceramics. Because when I think of ceramics, I think of when my daughter comes home with some pottery and I don't know what the hell to do with this damn thing. Throw it in the pit. I'd like to come and throw it into that hole sometimes. Talk to me about ceramics.
Uh, well, it's a.
Give me an idea of some of the stuff that are ceramics, because I'm just being honest, I don't know.
Tile.
Okay.
Ceramic tile that you find in buildings.
And that's, and that's, and that's considered clean fill?
Uh, that's inert, yes. Now, now, old tile that has mastic, that's an asbestos containing material.
That's not.
That's not this.
Okay.
That has to get remediated and disposed of and tested as part of a.
Different ways, correct?
Part, part of our thing is when we go see a pile and it has what looks like an empty percentage of ceramics, we're not taking it. We're, we're looking for good stuff because again, when I fill with this, I'm eventually going to build a foundation on it. So the last thing I want to do, it's like when you bury a soda can on a job site, and then you find that soda can every time you put a shovel in the ground, it's the same thing with ceramic. So while it's allowed, we've stayed away from it. If we were to go see the piles that we've taken in during the time, you'd see most of it looks like dirt or concrete.
And then we talk about inspections of materials that come in, correct?
Yes.
Who does them? You do them? Mr. Carp, you're here all the time? Selling your house in New Canaan, you're moving to Monroe? What are you talking about?
I spend way more time than I should. I can tell you that we have somebody on staff, uh, and again, we've all been trade, trained with this PID meter.
Okay.
Uh, it's.
Explain to me how that works.
PID meter, basically the fill comes in and you, it, it's a meter, you take.
Sniffer.
Yeah.
Smells for volatile organ, volatile organics.
So that if there was.
So a big truck comes in, you hop up on a ladder and you're inside that truck.
We, we, again, we've seen where it's coming from.
Okay.
So far, most of the fill that has come in, um, during the period that we were allowed to and for the contracts that we had, have come from either sites that we own directly or, uh, are part of our building projects.
So before your excavator puts it in a truck, it's tested?
Yes.
And when it gets here, does it get looked at again?
Yes.
Okay, so. How?
It gets dumped.
Well, it actually gets reviewed by the scale house.
Gets reviewed at the scale house.
Before it's dumped.
But, but again, it sounds like somebody's climbing into the back of the truck. It's where did.
Nobody's really looking at it because you can't see that high.
Correct. So it's getting driven to the site, and then we're putting it in piles, and we're marking the piles by where it came from. So we're segregating, in other words, if we had three different projects that were bringing in fill, project A in one place, project, project B in another, project C, and then we go with the.
So you, you dump it before you even know if it's clean or not?
Well, we know where it's coming from.
Okay, so you dump it before you know if it's clean or not?
We, well, not really, because we're testing it before it's going out to the truck. So from, let's say, project A, we're testing it at project A's location before it's getting loaded onto the truck.
They are, and they're providing the testing information to Rocket?
Yes, either they are or we are. We're getting test results prior to any of it being loaded onto a truck. So the, again, it's, it's hard to go look in the truck body, but again, since we've seen where it's coming from, we know where it's ending up, and we're not.
So you're telling me what, before it gets loaded on your truck, it's tested, and then when it gets dumped at your site, it's getting tested again?
Correct. We have a QA QC procedure, that material gets.
And we will be provided with documentation for that.
Yes, I believe everything that has come on recently, Rick has.
Yeah, and, and to that point, you know, I think this is a great example. Earlier this year, the applicant told the commission that, through their review of the regulations, there was a provision that all that stockpiled, that was discussed with the commission, the commission said maybe we should change that, but we understand what they were saying. So some material was stockpiled in the site. Some of that material came from the Town of Wilton, and before it was imported and stockpiled on the property, testing from the Town of Wilton, which was, was provided to the commission, it actually was submitted to DEP. There was correspondence back from DEP saying, yes, this material is clean fill. It's going to use the same policy and procedure for all the material being imported to the property.
And because, because as we know, this is a pretty big undertaking.
Yeah.
As you know. Um, and I do share some concerns about this undertaking, right? Like, I live in this town, I have kids in this town, I want to stay in this town. Um, I want to make sure everything that goes in that hole is clean and clear and, and something that, that if you could turn a faucet, you would drink out of it. Okay, so that's, that's my main concern. So when I question you about testing, that's where I'm coming from. And, and I just really, really need to make sure with such a huge undertaking that we, we get this right the first time. I don't want to get it right the second time. Second time's too late. So that's my concerns about some of the stuff that comes in. So that's my questioning with the ceramics. I'm not in love with the ceramics. I understand it falls under DEP. Um, I'm not in love with the asphalt, I understand where it falls, but sometimes we have to. Sometimes we have to stay away from, from, even though it, it's correct, it can still be wrong.
But let me address that. Again, as, as concerned as you guys have, remember the liability falls to the ownership, okay? Uh, so that's why we've gone above and beyond.
I know, but I see your savvy lawyers that you bring here and sure you have easy ways out of it and all that kind of stuff. I get it, I get it. Like, this guy's a shark over here, what are you talking about? Still not for Leon, it's not nice, you know what I mean? As an animal.
But, but.
Chihuahua bodies, the pitbull.
You said you wanted a textbook.
This body doesn't play tennis, so.
Neither does this. But as I said, I think from the commission from day one, I'm happy that Rick and Joseph have been out. We're prepared to do this as an open book. I don't want anybody to have concerns that anything that is going into the hole. Yes, I cannot be there 24/7/365, but the people I have hired, okay, all know the drill, because the last thing that I want is to be, it's not even in front of you guys, any governmental body saying, we didn't do the right thing, okay? And that's why we've gone back, we've reset. The protocol that we are following, we have voluntarily sort of put in, is a higher standard than we think anybody else in the state, certainly on a private site like this. So I understand the concerns. We're very aware of those concerns. I want to make sure not only that this generation can drink the water, but the next generation and the generation after that. So I understand, we're doing the best possible reviews that we can. That's why I spent the summer driving from one end of the state to the other, looking at fill. Again, if something looks bad or smells bad, and we see on one of the tickets, it says, "Material did not smell well." We segregated it. We then tested it. We tested each of those loads, sent it out for testing, and it came back and it was fine. Yet, they explained to us that it could be the organics, but I wasn't going to go put that on the property that we own, that we're the stewards of, okay? So I understand everybody's concerned and it's not like it's going on deaf airs.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mike.
Okay.
Commissioner West.
All right. I feel like we've been going in circles on this property for too long now, and I just want to clarify, you know, for the record. I mean, Mr. Karp, there's not going to be anything sold from this property.
That's correct. Yes, the only thing that is if we hit, and I want to get the full, if we hit something that is metal, we're going to put it in a 30-yard container and ship it out.
Scrap it.
Scrap it, right. But there is, our view is not to take material in that is very difficult to source and then sell it. I have two very large fill projects in this town, okay? So I'm trying to get as much clean, meets our standard fill, okay, as I can. It would be pretty foolish of me to bring it here and then send it anywhere else, so.
See where I'm getting at?
Yes.
We've dealt with this for too long and we don't want to go down the same road.
No, this is not a quarry operation. This is not a sell material operation. This is a fill-in, this hole to the best possible standards that we can and create a office partner there.
All right. And Mr. Sully, you had the compaction on this, you know, a hole this magnitude, and I know you talked about it a little bit, but can you elaborate on how this is going to be safely compacted for future development?
Sure. So the material has to be created to the right gradation, so it's uniform in its gradation. It gets placed in measured lifts and then compacted with typically five passes of a five-ton roller. So on a site like this, you're going to have bulldozers and, you know.
What's a measured lift?
So a measured lift is generally eight to 12 inches for the upper lifts. For deeper, deeper fills, you can sometimes go maybe 18 inches, maybe two feet, but that's only because there's so much of a loading of the upper levels that you can do a little bit thicker. I've worked on projects that have had very deep fills that have been okay for maybe a three-inch minus material that can get to 18 inches, maybe 24 inches. But that's a measured lift. That's, you know, that's dumped with a dump truck. It's then bulldozed out, so it's the right height, and then it's compacted with a roller. And then rinse and repeat.
Got it. Got it.
And then, actually, as part of that, the material that's being placed has to have a sieve analysis. Part of that sieve analysis tells you what the density is, so that you actually have to compact it to a 95% compaction based on the density of that specific material. Also has to be placed with the right moisture content. So as part of that, there'll be testing done to verify that it meets those two criteria.
And how often is that testing done? Based on elevations or?
Every lift at a kind of uniform, you know, sporadic placement as it's put down. And that's something that's required to be not only, you know, it's going to be required not only as part of the fill operation, but any potential user here is going to require to have all that analysis to show that there's going to be a comfort with their building.
So, you know, I did read all the reports and I looked at all the data, and I feel like the applicant has been very cooperative up until this point. And I, you know, I believe that we have, you know, conclusive data. I think that we could move forward with an approval on the application as far as I'm concerned. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Lupo.
A lot of my questions have already answered. Good questions. Thank you for your presentation tonight to everyone for being thorough and being transparent with a lot of the things that I think you knew we were going to ask, so I appreciate that. Just piggybacking on Rob's comment, I know in the application it's in there to remove material from the site besides anything you find hidden. Is there anything else you're planning on removing from the site except old Coke cans that you find or is the metal?
No.
No, okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
And again, as the applicant, and I'm happy to come back and give you guys updates again through the wetlands. I think we offer that every quarter.
Yeah, quarterly. And part of this too is we propose to provide quarterly reports to this commission, which is essentially just a summary of all the activity, material, you know, we'll provide you as much as you conditionally report, provide.
And again, if the commission, again, we've done a field trip, if they feel that as we're progressing, okay, they decide to come out with it, again, I'm prepared to do this as an open book. I need everybody here to be comfortable. We also need to do it properly. I have a lot of money at this point invested, not only in the land approval, but a reputation that's 30 years. If anybody has, you know, Googled us, you'll see I'm everything from a coach here on a not-for-profit to I was the president of the Museum and Nature Center. So I haven't spent 30-plus years in this business to ruin it on a single project.
And I'll say that too, just, you know, as this commission knows, not a lot of my clients speak when I'm representing them, because frankly, a lot of them too.
We know.
But, you know, for this, I think it's been important for me and important for Mr. Karp to be here and present in front of you, because he's not, you know, some figurehead behind a curtain. He's here. He's in Monroe a lot, and he's invested a lot in the community. And I think, you know, I think that's important for the commission to consider.
That's actually my next question. I wasn't on the commission when you guys had your initial walkthrough and tour. I would like to be able to go on and do that. I know Dom, I don't think you were on either. So if we could arrange that somehow, I would like-
Your hiking boots.
Coordinated with staff.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Be happy to meet you there, whatever's convenient.
How long do you think it would take for you guys to de-water the property?
It's not something that's going to happen overnight. I mean, there's a-
That's a big, yeah.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of water, there's a lot of, there's a lot to de-water to get that to a place where you can place material. I'm not sure if we, I don't know.
It's months, not weeks.
Right.
And we're just, we're not sure what the volume metric, and again, if we have a rainy or snowy winter at 30 days, so again, we're not pumping. I know that you heard that we are pumping. We are not pumping. The reason we're not pumping is I need to get a concrete outflow that we have ordered. It is being produced, but until that time, we are not pumping, so.
Do you ask how long it's going to take?
And, you know, the current water level now, is it kind of maintaining or is it rising?
It rises every time it rains because there's no other outlet. And frankly, because of the cold weather, there's not as much evaporation.
It's rock on bottom sides. It hasn't, it literally has no place to go.
So then my next question is probably going to be the same answer. You know, once you be de-water, how long do you anticipate getting up to that 411 point?
They could wear away that rope.
Last time we had talked, it was like 10 years to fill, you know, or be-
Sure. So that's actually a really good point on guys' rock, because it's something that's part of the application. So the previous application was 1.2 million yards and then it was 900,000 yards. We've considerably reduced that. We're proposing to import 493,000 cubic yards. Our, the commission can grant approval for a fill permit for two years. We acknowledge that this, it's going to take probably four and a half years to place all this material. Now, the commission, under its authority and under the regulations, has the ability to grant you a permit, and they grant that extension. We're communicating to you now that we're going to be before you requesting that extension, because we won't be able to get to the complete finished grade in just two years. I'll say, I think we can likely de-water and get to elevation 410. I would say if we're not there by next fall, I think we should be there by next fall, you know, through the winter and then through a good construction season for the summer.
The biggest issue, quite honestly, that we have is sourcing the material.
Sourcing the material.
Understandable.
That is, I can't tell you how much time I spend. On any given week, it's 10 to 12 hours, and we've basically turned most of that down.
And I think to that point, I think while we've been going through this effort with the Wilton Planning and Zoning Commission, I think there's probably been a couple-
That we've missed.
Maybe 150,000 yards.
Yeah, the universities and the colleges that are doing projects, their material gets tested even before we think about moving it. But you have to be able to take it when it's available. They will not store it for us, and we run into that problem. I even had contracts initially when we were bringing fill in and then had to stop. I had signed contracts and that ran into a problem where we had to bring some fill in that, under that start.
I think my last comment, and it's more of a comment, I know one of the waivers is to, for the berms increased along the site to prevent a visual barrier for the project site. Any reason why we're trying to prevent, like, if we want to drive by and kind of just take a look to see what's going on, you know, I would like some more visibility to actually drive by and see what's going on rather than-
I mean, we could-
Just more of a comment than-
I believe my engineer designed those berms, but none of those berms are berms that would prevent visualization from the site itself.
Okay.
I think most of them are either existing, because remember, the site was cut down, so the berm is actually there, was the old height. But again, it won't be anything that would prevent somebody from driving through the site and seeing what we're doing.
All right. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay. I have no questions at the moment. So let's go to the public. If there are any members of the public here tonight that have any comments or questions for the applicant. Mr. Leniker.
You knew it was going to be me. Joel Leniker, 70 Huntington Road, Monroe, Connecticut. I'm going to ask the same, I have four questions and one comment. I'm going to ask the same question of this applicant that I asked for the intervenors. Is, what is the vision? I'll give you the four questions. You can write them down and then you can respond. How's that? Instead of going back and forth, that might be a quicker use of the time. My suggestion. You're meeting my suggestion.
Go ahead.
I like it.
Okay. The vision for this site, I have heard that we're going to build commercial buildings on this site. How many commercial buildings are we talking? What is our projected value of those buildings? The reason I ask is that becomes taxable income for the community. Important. We have at least three other mining operations or semi-mining operations that said they're all going to build buildings on their properties. One, it's been going for 15 years and no building in sight that ever will be built on that, okay? My other, the follow-up to that is, is this, it took 13 years to remove the materials? Obviously, we're not going to move it back in a year, right? Is this really a processing plant and a filling plant to pay for the site, or are we truly looking to build commercial buildings here? Same point. We're going to fill this site, make our money filling the site, and then never build a building. Two, why fill? Good design, good business is good design, as I say. Is this the best design and best process, given the site that we have right now, to produce a taxable-producing property? Don't know. Number three, will the fill come from out of state? Will it be restrained just to this state? Number four, the timeline has been discussed briefly to bring the property back to a building condition. I'd just like a confirmation of that. Yes, the state of Connecticut does allow for, after five years, an extended permit. We have some projects out there that have been out there 15 years now, right? How are we going to be assured that we're not sitting on another site that in 15 years, whoever's sitting on this dais isn't dealing with the issues that we're talking about today? And then my final comment is, thinking, got bifocals, I got to take these glasses off. I'm thinking quite honestly that the former owner of this site made his money removing the materials. I think the new owner will be making his money on filling the site, and that no building will ever be built. Thank you.
Mr. Leniker, would you like to respond to those comments?
Of course. Sure. Why don't I start while Kevin's looking? As far as the vision, Bruce Wettenstein, who is actually my commercial broker, is here. We can't really market this property in the condition that it's in. The vision is to turn this into a taxpay, you know, big business. The fill portion is actually an outflow, not an inflow. Sourcing this material with the guidance that we've done does not make this an economic driver. The economic driver is to create hopefully high bay storage or facilities, not dislike everybody else in the state of Connecticut. So the vision is to get us out of the site work business. It's not a part that we want to be in. It's to build and develop this. Again, filling the site is not possible. And the way we're doing it and the lifts and the testing and the cost of everybody else, I would be ecstatic if what we get paid to bring in covers the cost of placement and everything else. Our economic model is not to make the money on the filling, but it's actually on the space that we would build. The reason we have two sites is we're planning, again, a grade if someone, user came in or needed 350 plus another-
65.
65,000 square feet. We're looking for anybody who would like to come in, again, that beats the zoning, and we have to come back to you guys on a building, of course. But that is really sort of the vision and the site. Why fill? We have to get out of the water in the whole portion. And the other is now that it's at 100 different elevations. We've tried to balance the site as best we can. On the Cambridge side and on the Ford Independent side, we might have gone lower, but in order to get water into the wetlands, that's what's causing the height there, plus coming off Cambridge, coming off Independence Drive, which is a much higher elevation than Cambridge. That's why it's at two different heights.
And the wetlands commission, you know, they issued a violation. They wanted to know what impacts were caused by the previous operation. And the reason for that is that the East Hurley wetland was, has been starved of water, and the Vernal Pool in that area has been, the efficacy of it has been reduced, and the Vernal Pool obligate species weren't there because it was just too dry. So in order to satisfy them, we have to raise this site to get that water back over to that wetland.
Out of state fill, we haven't had anybody right now who's really seemed to get any. If I could find something in West, again, trucking becomes the delta on this. If somebody, if they were building a Sunni purchase and they wanted to drive to Monroe, I'd be ecstatic. Again, everybody's talking about tipping fees. In some of these cases, I think we may be on the hope to buy a fair amount of this fill. And the timeline is, I have one of my younger associates, Mitch Wade. I'm 62. I'd like to see this built in my lifetime. So when we talk about timeline, the thought process is, as quickly as I can get this filled, Bruce can find me a tenant, we'll be back to you guys with a, here's what we'd like to build as quickly as we can. But again, it's a great deal of site work even before I can get somebody on, you know, help market this. Because anybody who's come on has seen, you know, what we need to do. And with any big user, they're not looking for the headache of the filling. They're looking for the ease of building and getting that approved.
I was just going to, you know, the estimate, you know, how many buildings, how big, taxable income, things like that. I mean, we-
I mean, we had, we, as part of our application, we submitted a potential development plan. That plan included a 65,000 square foot building on Independence Drive, facing Independence Drive, and a 300,000 square foot building on 64 Cambridge. You know, I'm trying to figure out what that taxable income, that ratable might be. And just really quick, as, you know, it's, it's easily well over a million dollars in taxes. You know, and when this site gets developed.
Then I'd be happy to pay the town of Monroe a million dollars in taxes because that means I have a tenant and income coming in.
Hey, I just have one question. What's your septic capacity on that property after you fill it?
So there are actually areas to the western side of the site, there's, there's adequate capacity. Along the edge of kind of where it was filled to before, because there was, you know, if you remember, this was, this was a mountain that was cut down. So there's actually quite a bit of septic capacity along the western side. And there's an area to the south of the town's municipal detention basin that was kind of untouched, which has quite a bit of septic capacity. So there's septic capacity to accommodate the users like we're talking about. Because generally, those industrial users and those warehouse type spaces don't generate a lot of septic. So there is capacity for it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that have any questions or comments on this application? Any members of the public online tonight that have any questions or comments on this application? From the commissioners.
I want to talk to the staff. Taking of this magnitude, is something that we can handle in staff?
I'm ready to make a, ask a question of the commission.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, tonight is the appropriate time to discuss if in fact you need any assistance in reviewing this during the review process of the application and if this commission is to approve this application, the filling process. In accordance with section 6.4.4Q, any additional info, including the use of professional assistance, as the commission deems necessary to render a decision on this application? What I've heard tonight and what I'm throwing out for the commission to consider is, does the commission want to hire an LEP consultant to assist the planning and zoning on this pending application? And if the commission is to approve this application, does the commission want to continue to use the LEP consultant to monitor the progress of this project? And is the commission interested in hiring a professional engineer in reviewing the compaction activity testing results and the quarterly reports? So I'm throwing out the select, the possible selection of two professionals.
Do you have an LEP that the Wetlands hired?
Yes, that is an LEP.
Can we get a copy of that report?
Yes.
Okay.
What, do we need another one on top of that one?
This would be independent.
Separate.
Yes.
And ongoing.
And ongoing. So that's the consensus that this board needs to determine. The clock is ticking.
But my question.
I, I would suggest that you hire a independent civil engineer.
It's.
But I will, I will discuss that with them. Go ahead, Jeff.
I was just wondering, because we don't have, I mean, do we have the capability to keep an eye on this? I mean.
Not to the degree that this commission.
So I mean, the staff doesn't have the capability to keep an eye on this and to review all this information?
As the applicant indicated, this is a four-year process.
Right. And that's my concern, is to keep an eye on, on the project.
Yeah. So Mr. Chairman, those are the.
And so you don't think the town engineer that we have now and Joe would be able to.
I think it's beyond, but I, I will talk, I will talk to staff tomorrow and give a, a, a report back to the commission on that. But that, that's my initial feeling at this moment.
That they cannot.
That they cannot.
And we can get a copy of the findings of the LEP that.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we ought to leave this hearing open?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I would suggest that we continue this to the December 16th. I had asked the commission previously to cancel that, but we have pending hearings that, that got carried over to December 2nd. So we need two meetings.
Give the hearing open pending what? Pending decisions on?
Well, we have pending public hearings that are open. Oh, why are we leaving this open? Well, we need a report from the town engineer.
Okay.
And I think you should make a decision on the hiring of the consultant during the public hearing.
This consultant will do something that the other consultant hasn't already done?
No, they, if you choose a consultant, they will be focused on specific tasks.
And this would be once approved, we'd be hiring a consultant to come onboard?
Or you can hire an LEP now to assist you during this review, if that's your, if that's your prerogative.
I don't think we need that, but.
No. I would be interested in the ongoing consultant personally.
An engineer.
A monitor.
Civil engineer.
Yeah. I think we have enough.
Just throwing it out there, who pays for that? And I know, I'm not paying for it, but.
How expensive is an engineer?
These are all things, these are all things I have to.
Solely pay for it? Because we want them.
Wetlands Commission, it does have third-party consultants, part of their condition, so I'm not sure if this commission can piggyback on that.
That's what I would be looking at.
Okay.
I just do want.
They have a third-party consultant.
Oh, my bad. It's a condition.
I told you, I told you it's a pit bull. My favorite dog, by the way. I got one.
I think.
It's all about it.
So you know, in terms of hiring an ongoing consultant, you can make that decision during deliberations. I don't believe you have to make that during, during a public hearing. After the hearing's closed, you can make a determination about whether you want to hire a monitor or ongoing consultant.
Yeah, I think he's right. Yeah, that would be, that'd be the best time to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. To have additional approval.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that was.
I agree.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
So if Wetlands has, why can't we just use the Wetlands?
We're just saying.
And then Mr. Carp's not.
You'd have to.
The EPs.
I mean, the guy's gonna have to get paid.
But the task at hand, Bruno, the task.
Yes.
A little different.
I pay you to do one roof. I can't just say, I'll do three more.
So you can pay for all three of them? All right, so it would have, it'd have to be, it'd have to do two different jobs. The same person would do two different jobs, is what you're saying?
I'll be consolidated, but. So I'll prepare a scope of services, general scope of services, and, and give a dollar amount.
And you said we're waiting on an engineer report from the town?
Yes, town engineer.
Okay, and you guys would want to comment on that?
Mr. Schultz, are you talking about hiring a third-party consultant to review the application?
Oh, I threw that out. They have said no. They're talking about if it gets approved.
Deliberations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the same application that was in front of Wetlands, so I, so I guess you're gonna get to see it again.
Aye, to peruse.
The only other question is, since we're, we're meeting over. I know there was a comment from the intervener about other consultants. He was gonna call.
There's another LEP report. We should probably have a copy of.
Yeah, I couldn't make it this evening. I just wanted to make sure it was only, that, that was the only person we were waiting.
I don't know. Do we need to hold the hearing open to hear from? Yeah, the, the intervener has requested the continuation of the hearing.
I, okay, but.
Yeah, but he could keep.
How long are we gonna continue?
No, then you're gonna have to decide when you're gonna.
We're kind of there, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think the commission's ability, intervention. I think the chair and the commission's ability generally, what the statute allows is the applicant gives a presentation, the intervener gives a presentation. The applicant responds to the intervener. And that's, so I think we've, we've done our best to respond to what's been presented so far. We know that they've requested to have their LEP all the way up to the next hearing. We'd like to hope that, you know.
Well, that's the problem. I mean, if we leave it open, they're allowed.
We can leave it open.
It's open right now, yes.
I have questions for their hydrologist that wasn't. I have questions.
Hydrologist or our LEP?
No, hydrologist.
Hydrogeologist?
Yep.
Okay. Because, because there's, because that's different from the LEP.
No, no, I have questions. I was talking to you about the groundwater, about what materials you put in there to increase it. And hydrologists would be able to give me that answer. So.
I think that.
I'd like to talk to him. Right. I want to leave the hearing open because I want to talk about what chemicals and what material you put in. It increases the pH, it increases the iron, if it does that. And I need that, get that from a hydrologist because he pretty much knows.
I, I think an environmental scientist would be best to answer those questions. And I just want to make sure I'm giving, knowing what you're looking for, I want to make sure I bring the right professional. Because our hydrogeologist did really more about round water flows and, you know, things like that.
Quality, I mean.
Maybe I think that, that the water quality stuff, that's probably more in line for like environmental scientists. So we'll, we'll, we'll bring the right professional for you.
Right.
But you guys also want to keep it open because you wouldn't want us to close it and then get engineer a report that you couldn't respond to, correct?
You know, we, we worked through, we worked through Scott's comments as part of our Wetland application. And we've been able to address all those comments and concerns. I'm not sure how much more would come as part of this review.
It's not gonna be a, a, a big report at all.
Right.
He's already told me he wanted to see how tonight went, if there was gonna be new submissions or what have you. And that's not the case.
But we, we'd like to see it and we'd like to address it.
And we'll leave the hearing.
Leave it open. Next meeting.
Thank you.
Please.
Bring the mistletoe and.
No mistletoe. Spy tech knock.
All right, moving on.
Meeting minutes.
Ending meeting minute. You all have a meeting minute? November the 4th. Chair, we intend a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November the 4th.
Motion to approve meeting minutes, November 4th.
Have a motion. There any discussion of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, we have the 824 referral.
All right, that's later.
Still in the meeting.
There's no discussion of the minutes?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right. We do not have any deliberations tonight. We have an 824 referral. This is an acceptance of land donation at 69 Cottage Street.
Yeah, the commissioners have a copy of the letter from the first electman and the location map on Cottage Street.
There's a landowner that wants to donate about a third of an acre on 5th Street, I believe, the back portion, the 1.47 portion is already owned by the town. They'd like to accept this parcel so that they can possibly sell it as a building lot. What I get of it. So we just need to.
Report favorably.
What favors, what don't favoritize?
Who's donating it?
The owner.
Of, he doesn't live in town anymore. Sounds like a retirement. All right.
What's the reason for donating it, though?
To avoid taxes.
Taxation.
Okay.
Some third of an acre.
They can't build on it. They can't do anything with it.
Got it, got it.
It's like a, it's like a campground. I mean, do we, we need a motion or it's just a favorable?
A motion in a second to report whatever which way you want.
A motion to give a favorable approval to the 8-24 referral to accept the donation, 69 Cottage Street to the town of Monroe.
All right, have a motion. Second, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, we have the schedule. The schedule of regular meetings for 2022. Everyone has a copy? Are we supposed to sign this?
Chairman signs it, yeah.
Okay. I just have a bunch of copies.
I mean, I didn't really look over this.
Our staff reviewed it. It doesn't conflict with any holidays.
Okay.
Inconsistent with your past meeting schedule.
Take a motion.
March 17th is St. Patrick's Day.
Michael Reil. Oh, yeah, wait a minute. You got two, two pretty bad holidays on here.
Unofficial. I, I retract what I said. There is an unofficial.
And birthdays on here too. All right, so I don't see any problems with this. Is anyone at this point? And we can always change it later.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
We just added December 16th.
I won't be at.
A motion to.
I won't be at either February because I'm not coming out of my house.
Motion to approve the minutes, or not minutes, the 2022 regular meeting schedule as drafted.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
I have a letter. Under correspondence. Letter from Danham, Danham and.
Danham.
Chairman, once again, I find myself urging the Planning and Zoning Commission to completely rezone Route 25 to mixed use. I believe it would help the town to meet its affordable housing requirement as well as helping Route 25 top the owners. Presently, Monroe lags behind Trumbull and Utown in achieving a revitalized Route 25. I wish to be part of its revitalization while benefiting myself and the town. I would like the town to be aggressive in obtaining federal funds to install sewers on Route 25. Thank you very truly. Yours, George W. Ganem, Senior.
Sounds easy enough. I'll get right on it.
Chairman's report. I don't have a report tonight. And the commissioners have a report tonight?
No.
Nothing?
Big.
On the left?
Joe does.
Joe Chapman. Meeting number one.
Joe, do you have a report?
Welcome.
It's a good one.
You don't have to read the whole thing, just.
I'm not going to.
Highlight.
No, 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 highlight it, highlight it.
Highlights, please, okay. Essentially, 125 Gordo Road, it's, it's stasis, nothing has happened for a couple of years now. We're right where we left years ago. 45 Pepper Street, grassed up construction, so long as the season persists, nothing has changed out there either. Anti-blight program, 3370 Turnpike, the owner has, is in the process of applying for demolition permit. We're still waiting for finalization on that. 5860 Turnpike, that's the old post office building on the right-hand side as you go down the road. He is painted, there's some roof repairs taken, has taken place. It's incomplete. We have got no applications on any further use of the property. 52 Moose of Trail, we received a blight complaint about that. Nobody lives there. We've sent certified mail to a post office box. We've got no response on that. Another follow-up letter is gonna go out. 58 Patchogue, complaint about not maintaining house properly. The owner's cleaned out the house. It's being sold as is. 219 East Villa Road, another blight complaint. We've already sent three, our, our special volunteer, voluntary compliance letters. There's been no reply. We found a new address to send it to. We're making one additional attempt to contact the owner after that. We'll have to go to citation and then possibly a marshal. 10 Victoria Drive, there's about 24 Amazon vans parked out there at the moment. That's what we saw the other day, went down for a quick look. The garage house is on-site, has not been placed yet. Nothing's happened with the proposed 10,000 square foot building out there yet. The pad site appears to be in place with a site work in the meantime. The tension pond looks good. The plantings look good. The banks are relatively stable, couple of spots rails have to be cleaned up, but generally the site's in decent shape. Asphalt's all striped, looks clean. Durant appears to be good, some very minor pounding and minor spots, nothing to be too concerned about. Even if you were in the middle of winter time, any freeze is gonna be very minor. We can see from the water pounding up there now. 64 Cambridge Drive, that's here, we just discussed that. 10 and 36 Main Street there. The pile in the front has been leveled. They're bringing in additional material there. It appears, from what I can see from the road, appears to be clean material. They've got piles over there, though, so they are doing some filling grain out there.
Noticed that the other day.
You see the valley now?
Yeah, it looks nice, actually.
It does, it does look a lot better. Anything else for me you'd like to address?
No, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Rick, some information the intervener has supplied us. I would like to make that available electronically. I don't want all that printed out.
Okay, it's, all right, it's, it's a lot.
I don't want it printed, that's.
Yeah, don't print it.
Don't print it?
Print it. Make it available to us electronically on.
Yeah, who the hell's gonna read all that shit?
Well, didn't we get, but it has to be available to crews.
That was old, that was last.
We got that email today of a thousand something. It was a PDF.
15.
I got an, we got 1,000 pages emailed. I got an, we got 1,000 pages emailed to us today.
You chewing on that?
That it? That it? That was the material, right? That's what I thought.
I'd like copies of the LEP Inland Wetlands LEP. The one they hired.
Can't even open it on my phone.
We haven't seen the copy of that.
Oh, what site? For, for Oh, yeah.
The LEP that, that Inland Wetlands had us, had hired
Yes.
to represent the town or to, to review the site plan, the same site plan we're reviewing.
Yeah, so I'm gonna get that report.
Yes, let it
And you can see where you have to supplement on it. Because remember, that's focused on Wetlands.
Yeah.
Yours is on
LEP.
Stone dust. And
The meeting.
Waterfalling.
If they get
Dust control.
You don't do anything.
The Wetlands are toast.
Then what? It's gonna, it's gonna get to a
I watched all the meetings because I
I'm walking through with the
I am. I'm waiting for someone with a picture. And I
And I didn't get anything.
Good. Tell you the honest, I'm just concerned about it because it's
There's abandonment issues on that.
I said abandonment issues, like
So we'll print copies of the LEP report. Yeah, everybody. Make that available.
Exactly, right.
All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.